Hi, I'm Jeremy Frostby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're the hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every day, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can view all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues that affect you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
I call to order the meeting of the Committee of the Whole on November 20th, 2024 at 7:02 PM. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Next item of business is the roll call. Administrator, can I help you?
Good evening. Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Aratafrada.
Here.
Alder Dantzler.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetser.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Vaffedari.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
Get a quorum.
Thank you so much. Next item of business is the approval of minutes. I'll need a motion on the October 23rd, 2024 draft minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alder Allen, seconded by Alder Jetser. Comments, questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Or all nays? Motion carries. Next item is public appearances for non-agenda items. I believe everyone here is to speak on an agenda item, and therefore, I'm going to wait for the items to have everyone speak, if that's all right. Please object now if you have any issues with that, Gary and Tom. Great. So moving on to item six, agenda items. 6A, Teen Center Feasibility Study Presentation. We have several public comments, and I would like to, given how long our agenda is today, and how many items we have to, I would like to limit the comments. We'll do three minutes. We don't have a ton of people. Let's do three minutes. But I will cut you off at three minutes, so be ready for that. Keep a timer if you need to. First up is going to be, I don't have a name, N. Beck? Yes. Yeah, welcome.
Give me a one-minute warning, if you don't mind.
Great.
Perfect. Hi, everybody. My name is Nathan Beck, and I have the privilege of leading the Madison area Out of School Time Initiative, where I get to work with youth-serving organizations that support over 12,000 children and teens in our area. Now, while 12,000 is an impressive number, and we're really proud of that work, there are thousands of more young people and teens who would be in programs if they were available. Now, I talk to a lot of people about these issues. I often hear about the need for better coordination, the concerns around duplication of services. And while those are things that I can understand, the truth is, those aren't actually issues. We have data on every single one of the 12,000 teens. They're not in duplicate services, right? The issue is scarcity of services, and you can't coordinate when the problem is scarcity. And so, I'll just give a quick example. This is from the Madison area, but we have Mendota Elementary School as one site. Across the street from Mendota is a neighborhood center, a Vera Court Neighborhood Center. You walk two blocks, there's another neighborhood center, Kennedy Heights Community Center. So in this community that has a school that has after-school programs at it, and two neighborhood centers, less than 70% of the demand is met. That means 30% of the kids that go to that school that need services aren't being served, even in a community with richness. The truth is, there's wide-scale unmet demand for youth services across our whole community. Now, despite this, there's also outcomes that are really clear about the benefits of them. We, again, have data on 12,000 young people. These are real young people in our area. The more they attend programs, the better their outcomes are. Their school outcomes, their GPAs increase, their school attendance increase, particularly for black male students. And particularly, actually, at the high school level is where we see the biggest and most significant impacts. The more they're enrolled in programs, the higher their outcomes are. But beyond school outcomes, you all know Governor Evers declared, I think it was last year, this is the year of youth mental health. So mental health is a significant issue. The Dane County Youth Assessment shows the more kids are enrolled in programs, the more trusted adults that they have in their lives, the better sense of community that they have, and the better their youth outcomes are, because they have those protective factors. You also know about return on investment. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, but you all know that investing services in the front end is good. A Pennsylvania recent study showed every $1 spent on youth programs returns $4. Richmond, Virginia, just invested a pretty significant amount into specifically teens. They saw a 60% reduction in youth violence that the mayor attributed solely to the significant investment in teen programs. So in an issue where the need is clear, there is large unmet demand, the cost-benefit is clear, and the outcomes, the good that happens is clear, I'm really hopeful that you all invest in making the Pittsburgh Teen Center a reality.
Exactly three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you.
Next up is Ari Lowe. Unger?
No, I was just.
Oh, just registering?
Yep.
Register only in support of the above matter. And comments, "I'm excited to see the Teen Center Project survey results. I hope it will show just how important this project is to do, especially in a time of need." Next item is Rita Burke-Henrichs wishing to speak. And next up is going to be Michael Leon. So if you want to be ready to come up after she's complete, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Rita Burke-Henrichs, a Pittsburgh resident of almost 20 years. I am opposed to this, not because it isn't a good thing, but because there are better ways to do it, and because we can't afford it. You just had a referendum where the public said, "Please be fiscally responsible." There are many people who are having, who are struggling, struggling to pay taxes, and they're not all Pittsburgh taxes, but they're taxes nonetheless. They're struggling to buy groceries. And to tell them they have to come up with more doesn't make a lot of sense. There's going to be a YMCA that's going to be close by. Why would we duplicate services? It doesn't make any sense whatsoever to say, "Let's have a teen center," when a community center, if we have the money for it, a community center would make a lot more. There are children who need tutoring. There are families that need support and social workers. A teen center, yes, terrific if you've got plenty of money. But Pittsburgh doesn't have it. How are you going to staff it? How are you going to pay for it? Borrowing money costs money. And you just told us you didn't have enough for staff right now. How in the world are you going to staff? And you need good workers if you're going to have a decent center of any kind. So I and many people say, "We just can't afford it." As much as it would be a wonderful thing, we can't afford it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Michael Leon wishing to speak. And then next up is going to be Tom O'Day.
Thanks for having the meeting in the evening, guys. My name is Michael Leon. I'm a resident of Jamestown for some 25 years. Live in Monticello now, and I've had the pleasure of gaining the confidence of my neighbors, Valley Forge, Richmond, Williamsburg, so forth and so forth. And the sentiment that I get, vox populi, is, geez, you know, it sounds like pretty admirable objectives. The aims of the teen center seem like something everybody would be on board. What makes it problematic is the cost. And I think the sentiment of the people, and this is on a different spending matter with respect to the referendum of November 5, folks are just getting killed with medical costs. It has nothing to do with us. Grocery costs, and so forth and so forth. My larger point is that this is not happening in a vacuum, and I just think that we need to do everything we can possibly do to decrease costs, to decrease spending, and just, I'm not convinced that we've done that. And I'm not sure, I just don't get why we have to build up from the ground a brand-new multimillion-dollar facility. I think we should be going in the opposite direction, just generally speaking, with respect to spending, going, okay, well, gee, how can we cut spending here, here, and here? And, you know, we have a high-service community, and I think everybody likes that, and, you know, it's easy to take for granted. But on the other hand, I just think we need to do everything we can possibly do to make a multimillion-dollar facility much less expensive. And I think we have existing facilities, existing structures, we have a good transportation system. I think we should explore that with more rigor before we jump into something that's really going to hurt folks, and we just need to go in the opposite direction. But I respect the aims and the objectives of everybody who's on board for the teen center. Thank you.
Next up is Tom, and following him is going to be David Haltford. Oh, Haltford.
Hello, my name is Tom. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh here. And I guess an initial question, do you all know how much the teen center is going to cost?
That would be a question.
What's that?
This is not a back-and-forth. You have three minutes to speak.
Yeah, there is a presentation about how it costs.
The presentation will be after this, yes.
Gotcha. Yeah, I mean, I just echo what Rita and Mike said. I think you just have a referendum where people said they're not ready to spend on police and fire, and I would just encourage you all to look at basic public services before things like a teen center. I do think, agree with the comments about duplication of services. I wasn't aware that a Y is in the works. The Boys and Girls Center is over there. The new trades facility is in that area, and it just seems like we're duplicating services. And to the gentleman's comments earlier about the 30% who are not being served, I don't know any of the details, and I'd love to talk about those, but, yes, please. Thank you. But I wonder if they're just not interested in the services. And I don't know the capacity of the Boys and Girls Center or the Trade Center, but if those aren't being utilized to full capacity, I don't know why we would need another location for teens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David.
Hi, my name is David Haltford. I'm a resident of Pittsburgh at 2621 Tarpaulin Hills. I've been in Pittsburgh since 1975. I am here to ask the council to reconsider the teen center for basically a repetition of the reasons that have been given beforehand. I do point out that there is the YMCA project that just came on board. The planning commission approved the rezoning, which allows the YMCA to pursue their project, which is, as I understand it, about five to 10 minutes away from the Verona Road West neighborhood. So it seems to me that you've got a duplication of services there, and it should be at least pursued, tabled, until we are aware of what that project is going to provide. There's no information, there is information about the capital cost. You've put $5 million plus into the CIP for the teen center. If you assume that the operating cost will be anywhere from 6% to 7% of the capital cost, you're talking about $300,000 to $350,000 per year going forward. I reiterate what past people have said about property taxes getting to the point where people, including those with other major expenses, you're asking people to do things they can't do. Just to give you an idea of the costs that have been incurred for putting what I would call projects that are not covered by statute into the CIP, in 2025, 2030, the CIP tax levy will go from $26,000, $2,643,000 to $3,752,000. That's a growth of 7.3% a year. The growth of net new construction is assumed to be about less than 3%. It's been told to me in the past that a goal of this government is to have the net new construction and the capital improvement tax levy approximately equal each other each year in terms of increases. You're a long way from that if you're talking about 7.3% growth in the CIP cost tax levy and the net new construction, about 4.5% a year. That means for property taxpayers, you've got a lot of pain coming in the next five If you look at the CIP, the Parks, Recreation, and Forestry and Public Works parks totals over $23 million from 2025 to 2034. If you look at the CIP in 2020 to 2030.
That's your time, David.
$139 million. 2025 to 2034, $188 million.
Thank you.
That's 7.9% increase.
Thanks for your time. Next up, we have Christopher Peguero.
Good evening, members of the council, city staff, and community members. My name is Christopher Peguero, and I'm a resident of Pittsburgh, a father of two, and a member of the Verona Area School District's Board of Education. I'm here tonight to voice my enthusiastic support of the proposed teen center, a project that has the potential to transform the lives of hundreds of teens in Pittsburgh and Verona. Currently, there are 641 teens between the ages of 13 and 20 in this area, with 58% of them coming from households that meet economic eligibility criteria. These numbers tell the story of need, one that demands our attention and action. A dedicated teen center would provide a safe space, welcoming space, for all young people, regardless of their background, to grow, learn, and to connect. This isn't just about filling a gap in recreational activities, it's about meeting critical needs. The center will offer opportunities for mentorship, leadership development, and career exploration. It will provide mental health resources and create a trusted space where teens can build relationships and envision a brighter future. In a time when mental health challenges are increasing, especially after the pandemic, such resources are not optional, they are essential. What sets this proposal apart is its focus on being youth-centric and inclusive, engaging teens in the planning process, as we have seen through the involvement with the teen interns with ETQ by Design. Ensures that the center is truly built for them, with their voices and ideas shaping the results. This approach reflects the principle "Nothing About Us Without Us" and demonstrates a commitment to equity and empowerment. Pittsburgh and Verona are communities rich with diversity and potential, but there are also places where disparities exist. By creating this teen center, we're taking a significant step toward closing those gaps. Research shows that spaces like this can improve academic outcomes, reduce justice system involvement, and support overall well-being. These benefits extend not just to teens who use the center, but to their families and the entire community. Some may wonder why we can't simply use existing facilities. The answer is simple. Our teens deserve more than just a repurposed space. They need a place specifically designed to meet their unique needs, a space where they can feel they belong and where their growth and development are prioritized. This teen center would be the first in our era to offer such a comprehensive and inclusive approach. As a father, I want my children to grow up in a community that values equity, inclusivity, and opportunity for all. Supporting this teen center means providing a foundation for success, not just for today's teens, but for our future generations. I urge you to move forward, and with this critical project, let's give youth of Pittsburgh and Verona a space where they need to thrive and show them that they are not just part of our community, but they're the heart of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online, Scott? It looks like we have three online, four. I guess we can start with, is Karen part of the, Karen's part of the...
I am. Can you hear me?
Are you part of the presentation, or are you here for public comment?
No.
Okay, great.
I signed up for public comment.
You have three minutes, Karen.
Great. My camera is really not the best, but I am actually, I wanted to speak in favor of the teen center and how excited I am that we're at the stage of a feasibility study. I'm the Executive Director of Centro Hispano of Dane County, located in South Madison. Roughly, we see about 7,000 individuals coming to Centro. We're a holistic, family-centered space that also centers young people, their voice, and their dreams. We create, we recently raised $20 million to open a new facility in South Madison, and we see that the needs are only rising. When you think about the Pittsburgh community, Leopold Elementary School, the biggest percentage of the community there is Latinx kids. The majority of the kids that we see at Centro state that they do not feel like they belong in the school district. The location of where the teen center is being proposed is in a space that cuts across different school districts. Creating a sense of belonging in the community will be key for safety and for the future of the community. But our kids deserve a space where they feel like they belong. And as well-intentioned as a YWCA, a Boys and Girls Club, and even Centro can be, these are family, adult-led spaces, and kids need space where they can actually develop their own voice and their own vision for the future. We've seen that at Centro. We see roughly 300 kids going through Centro every year. Each of my program staff are young people that have emerged from the community and from programs. They have been able to develop their voice, and they have been able to grow. I think having a space where Latinx kids and BIPOD kids are able to do that is invaluable for our community. I know as a nonprofit, I would be incredibly willing to be part of conversations when it comes to being an operator or a tenant at the teen center, and I know some other colleagues in the work that Nathan mentioned would be just as equally as interested as well. So please don't feel this is an effort that would lie solely on the citizens of Pittsburgh. I think it's everybody in the community who wants to see Pittsburgh thrive, because whatever happens in the neighborhood there will impact all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, I believe we have Matthew Braun. Can't see the rest of your last name.
I'm not actually speaking.
You have, oh, not speaking? Great. You have three minutes, Josh.
All right. Well, I'm proud to be here and speaking in support of the teen center. Been a member of the Southdale community, lived and worked in Pittsburgh and the former town of Madison for over 20 years. For many years, I taught martial arts in local community centers and schools, worked in community garden education in Southdale for much of this time, and spent many hours mentoring teens and kids, hearing their challenges and successes, getting to see their families grow and change over the years. And now I work in the Madison Metropolitan School District in both elementary and middle schools between here and the west side, South Madison. Teens and youth are the heart of the community. They serve like a bridge between the hard work of their parents and dependency of their young siblings or cousins. They're astute and passionate, deserve true safety and guidance. And truth be told, many families struggle to balance the urgency of now an economic crisis, rising rents, food expenses, the demands of one or two jobs, and the layered and complex needs of modern teens. After years of hard work in our communities, it's not hard to recognize that teens themselves are seeking out and hope to benefit from diverse and caring elders with time and mentors and caregivers. And they need safe and nurturing spaces where peer relationships of their own support can be built and maintained. This corridor, occupied by the northern city limits of Pittsburgh and the city of Madison, has some of the densest populations of childrens and teens in the county. And yet, teens in this area deal with routine long trips to school and entertainment, long neglected access to basic services. For years, it seemed that the most impacted neighborhoods here are the furthest from resources and support that teens need most. I've heard multiple people mention that the teen center is a duplication of services, yet I wonder, would anyone say that about the privileged youth who are provided many opportunities to choose from in parts of the city they can easily access? The proposed teen center meets fundamentally different needs than other services available in Pittsburgh and should be seen filling the critical gap. It's been painfully obvious that the passion and young wisdom that teens have, their voices and concerns, have been left out of planning decisions on all sides of the communities. In the end, I've watched as generations of youth have struggled with the reality of being left to largely figure out the tough questions of adulthood with few resources, little help, and heavy consequences. And I urge the city of Pittsburgh to make the teen center a reality. This kind of clearinghouse for community services, education, and engagement is absolutely essential. The planning process itself should be upheld as a model for Pittsburgh, any Pittsburgh project. Youth interns being enfranchised in local political process, youth voices at the center at every step, and a clear, transparent, community-based vision, it's just incredible. So it would be a real shame to let this kind of engagement and drive dissipate and not come to fruition.
Josh, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Nope. So we can move on to the presentation, and I believe I'm going to turn it over to Annette. Is that okay? Yeah. Annette Miller will take the floor.
Good evening. My name is Annette Miller. I'm the CEO and founder of EQT by Design, or Equity by Design. We were hired by the city of Pittsburgh to do the feasibility study for the Pittsburgh Teen Center. I am going to share my screen and bring up the slide deck. Can everyone see it okay?
We can see it.
Okay, great. All right. So first and foremost, I want to thank everybody for your time, and I'm sorry I can't be there in person, but our team is there in the room with you all, Matias Lemos Castillo and Naman Siaad. We also have UW Extension, who is one of our partners on this project, and we also have JLA Architects, who's online with us, Rafiq Assad. And then we also have Hope Community Capital, who is there in person, who did the financials, helping us to understand the finances, the operational and the capital costs for this project. So you'll be hearing from all of us tonight, including, most importantly, the teens, who are very integral and central to helping us understand what is it that we needed to know in terms of understanding what would make a feasible community, a feasible teen center for the city of Pittsburgh. And we wanted to open that up with remarks from Ojaswi, who actually was in Phase 1 of the Teen Center project, was an intern, and has since gone on to college, and she was brought back to be a fellow on this project. And so she is going to share a few words in terms of opening remarks. So I'm going to turn it over to Ojaswi.
Good evening, everybody. As Annette said, I'm Ojaswi Pasich, and I'm currently a sophomore at UW-Madison, majoring in neurobiology and psychology. And as Annette mentioned before, I was a youth intern during the Phase 1 of the Teen Center project, so I was in high school at that point, and I joined that project because I grew up in Pittsburgh, and I just wanted to have an opportunity to really support my community. And then I returned later on as undergraduate research fellow because of the incredible work being done to support youth, and also the fact that it was led by youth. So the teen center is crucial for the well-being of young people in Pittsburgh and the greater Dane County area, as it can provide them with the support and resources they need to thrive. This is especially important for justice-involved youth, who are more likely to experience mental health issues and show distrust toward the community due to systemic discrimination and other factors. And traditional interventions for these individuals aren't very effective, because they don't acknowledge the deeper issues that they experience while also holding them accountable. And there is also just a lack of personalized, trauma-informed support for them, whether it's at schools or even in other programs, and this is partially just because these programs aren't designed to target teens. The YMCA and the Boys and Girls Club are fantastic programs, but they are aimed at younger individuals, and that puts adolescents at a very interesting position, because they're not quite that young to sort of benefit from those resources in the same way. But they're also not adults, so they can't really take those adult resources and benefit from them. take those adult resources and benefit from them, which is kind of where the teen center comes in as a form of support for them. And the teen center can offer many resources, including restorative justice, mental health, and professional development services, which can address the issues that justice-involved youth experience and also contribute to their overall healing. And so that's why it's so important to fund this teen center. It can provide justice-involved youth with culturally responsive, trauma-informed support, and that will improve their well-being and give them the opportunity and skills they need to achieve long-term success. So this is not only helping us in the present, but contributing to a better future. So for me, the Fitchburg Teen Center is an investment in our future, and it also gives us the opportunity to create a community where we can care and support for each other and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ojaswi. I appreciate that. So next, what I want us to talk about is what will you learn today? Here are our objectives. As one, we want to recap what happened in terms of entire process, in terms of how the teen center came to be, and not like slog you through it, but let you know that there was some engagement. Talk about what happened in phase two, which is what this is, phase two, which is feasibility. We want to bring forth JLA Architects to have them tell and show how they helped us understand what feasibility looks like. And then Hope Community Capital, who helped us on the financial side of what does feasibility look like? And then we'll talk about some next steps, and then, of course, we will do questions and discussion. So with that, the phase two timeline is as follows. We opened up with hiring interns. We had eight. And then we also did stakeholder interviews. So that was what was different in the phase two approach. In phase one, we did engagement where we talked to the community, residents and teens, and we talked to 390 people in phase one, which was the engagement which informed phase two, which is what we're presenting tonight. And so we've gone through a process of really trying to understand very specifically and in a more narrow sense, what would make this project feasible? So what makes this project feasible and what are we thinking about is demographics? So as the slide shows, there are 641 teens who live in the Verona area, Fitchburg area, and they go to Verona area school district between the ages of 13 and 20. And 58% of those students meet economic eligible criteria, which is 100 and, less than 185% of the federal poverty level. And when you look at the demographics, it talks about what percentage are Hispanic, which primarily Hispanic with also representation between African-American and also white, with another that is compiled as other. In the phase one engagement, as I said, there were over 390 people who responded, over 200 teens, thanks to our teen interns. And again, remind you, 641 between the teens, between the ages of 13 and 20, and we had 200 teens engaged. And then we had another 190 adults participate in the phase one engagement data. And so what we learned is that adults were concerned about health and mental health, wondering about recreation, sports, youth leadership, youth development. Teens talked about chill-out space, social and mental health, recreation and sports. LGBTQ and BIPOC teens were concerned about inclusion and equity and diversity, and they also were concerned about social and mental health. And then LGBTQ and BIPOC adults were interested in what types of art, music, and more creative ways in which teens could express themselves. So as part of phase two, as I mentioned, this is about, phase two is about continuation of teen leadership and making sure that we had justice-involved youth. In this process, we identified strategic goals and purpose, which you'll hear more from JLA Architects. We also sought to take a deep dive, learning from key stakeholders, which we'll also get into. And then what we present through Hope Community Capital and their good work is talking about what is an approximate range for consideration for operations and capital? And also with, between JLA and Hope Community Capital and listening to teens, really thinking about what are the optimal space uses? So as I shared, we did, spent a lot of time doing what were called phase two stakeholder interviews. So the teen interns went to West High School in Verona, and they also talked to different groups in the area doing three in-person engagements, a virtual engagement. And they reached out to 101 teens as part of their work. And then on top of that, the UW fellows, which you heard from Ojaswi earlier, and you'll also hear from Awa as well, they did their own research and studies as well, and they also did in-person engagements. They did a virtual engagement, and they were able, and they did justice-impacted work, and so they reached out to 10 teens, and then they also reached out to some adults as part of their research. And then Equity by Design and Hope Community Capital. We talked to the city of Fitchburg. We talked to key stakeholders in neighborhoods. We talked to the friends of the teen center, some local businesses. And then we also reached out to potential, to, actually not potential, that's not what I mean to say. We talked to teen operators, so centers that do teen programming. And you can see on the screen who they were. And then we also reached out and had light conversations with the Madison and Verona school districts as well. So we ended up reaching out to 25 adults and organizations overall. So these were just some of the, I'm not going to go through all of this just because I want to make sure that we get into the questions that the council might have, but just want to demonstrate that the teens and their work was very robust and very intentional and designed. But one of the things that I would bring up is that the teen stakeholder work and priorities and themes that came up were mental health and well-being, community connections, really wanting to understand, you know, and be involved in the operations of, of this teen center, really interested in what educational career opportunities that might be. They were very interested in accessibility, both from accessibility in terms of location of the teen center, it being situated and close to where they live, and then also just thinking about, is it on the bus line, et cetera? And can they get to it? And then, of course, they were interested in what kinds, in the amenities and aesthetics of the teen center in terms of making it a place where they can be their full selves. When you're at school, you have a face. So for the adults in the room, when you go to work, you wear a face. Your face is different than the one that you wear when you're at home. This is the same thing for teens. They wear faces too. They're looking to be in a space where they don't have to wear their face, that they can just bring their full selves into the space. That's what they're looking for. That's what they're seeking. And they also talked about what are must-haves, and again, we'll get more into that further in the presentation. Also, part of the work is, and it looks like, we also talked about the work of Ojaswi and Awa in terms of the work that they did in terms of restorative justice, and what are those priorities? Again, Ojaswi did a great job in expressing that, so I'm not going to repeat it. But you can see on this slide here, mental health and well-being, relationships, leadership, and hope and identity for the future. We also did, as EQT by Design and Hope Community Capital, we did 25 interviews of different individuals and entities, really trying to understand and get insights about the teen center operations and programming, really trying to understand the needs of the city of Fitchburg, listen to the school districts and what they would be interested in, along with a few businesses and neighborhood stakeholders. Over 150 emails went out to inform and invite different programming and resource-oriented groups to engage with us. When we spoke with Fitchburg city staff, we talked to administration, we talked to the library, we talked to economic development. These are just high-level, major themes and priorities that came up from that conversation. So they were really, you know, interested and focused on facility planning. What's the community involvement? What kinds of services? The key highlights is collaboration and partnerships and funding and resource allocations. The items in bold were where they were really spending their time. And then staffing and volunteer programs. So they were really interested in wanting to understand how this would operate from a programming and staffing perspective. When we talked to certain neighbor, when we were in the neighborhoods, talked to the friends of the teen center, which is sort of a fundraising group for the teen center and a couple of local businesses, there were lots of different themes, and I couldn't bold any of them because all of them, given the different groups that we were talking to, all of these came up. But what was really interesting is they were very centered on what did the teens want? So really talking about how do we address and access barriers? What are sort of the funding issues? Where, what is the, are the teens involved? Are we thinking about location and accessibility, et cetera? And of course, mental health, collaboration partnerships, safe and welcoming spaces. We held two public workshops. One was in person, and the other was virtual. So great work was done by the teens in hosting these events on the project's behalf. And so lots of good content was identified from the presentation. It was really well-done. And we, again, pulled comments from those different events and have really tried to think about, you know, in putting this presentation together, we kept that at the front of our mind in terms of talking about the feasibility of this. Again, I'm going super fast just because I really want to get to the Q and A piece, and the really meaty good stuff is coming up next. So I really want to turn the floor over to JLA Design, where they are going to talk about feasibility from the sense of what are the teen center's strategic goals? What are the purpose of the facility, and how do they use the data to help develop design? So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Rafiq Assad.
Thanks, Annette. My name is Rafiq Assad with JLA Architects, and I want to quickly just speak to this pre-design phase that we were going through in the phase two. And like Annette said, based on the numerous community engagement pieces and workshops and interviews, there were really about five strategic goals or major themes that rose to the top that we heard from the teens, and those are the location and accessibility, safe and welcoming spaces, you know, engagement opportunities for teens, funding and partnerships, and then teen-focused operations, things that really did were geared towards that population. And as we go through these, these are just giving a little bit more information on what each of those themes, what we pulled from the teens regarding each one of those themes. So when we talk about location and accessibility, something that's multi-generational and accessible, diverse spaces, cultural diversity, facilities that really did speak to that demographic. When we look at the welcoming spaces, we talked about community collaboration, inclusion, indoor-outdoor relationships, spaces for various forms of art, cooking, hangout spaces, and opportunities for commerce. Next slide. The teen engagement spoke to involving the teens in the design throughout the entire process, from conception to programming to actual operating the space, different spaces within it, as we talked about the program that really did center itself around the teens through the designing of the programs and the actual curriculum. And then the funding and partnerships, where we look at resource allocations, financial feasibilities, collaborating with various local entities, and bringing this multipurpose event space for those opportunities as well. And lastly, the teen-focused operations, flexible well-staffed programs with opportunities for volunteer support from teens, as we did with our interns and other support. And it's just, is it a summary of all of those things that you, I think you'll get these slides later, so that you look at them. So from those themes, we, we looked at our pre-design, and we started to do a adjacency diagram. That's what you see on your screen here. So when we pulled those, the programs from those different themes of those five strategic goals, we started to put those into programmable spaces, and what that will look like and how they will be next to each other in this conceptual adjacency diagram. So you start to see things like kitchen spaces, indoor-outdoor spaces, multipurpose event spaces where you can have community events, and you can have events that support the teens, various programs of art and workshops and maker spaces, computer spaces, resources, meeting spaces, spaces for, for conferencing and computer labs, and then administrative spaces. So all of these program spaces that you see here were pulled away from those five strategic goals that rose to the top from all of the many forms of community engagement that was done. And then what's next? The next steps is, so we have our pre-design, and we start to move into the typical architectural phases of design development, schematic design, and things like that. So that consists of things like site acquisition, where is it going to be? What does the site look like? How are we going, how's the site going to conform, constrain the actual built project? Operator selection, you heard some of those things talked about earlier from Karen, formal RFPs and building and construction. So this is all about just the typical architectural phase that comes next, design development, where we start to refine that adjacency diagram and make it start to look like a building with walls and circulation and things like that. Next slide. The municipal entitlements, which is a city process through all projects where we start to look at approvals and zoning and things like that. And then, next slide, we go into full construction documents where, you know, we contribute, we produce plans for, for building an actual facility or renovating facility, whichever one comes to fruition. And this was just an example of a similar, we did this similar process, it's basically a template that we do for most of these project types. And we did this with the Imagination Center in Ryanville Park over in Madison. It's a similar, I wouldn't say a similar program, but it is a community-based project where we did years and years of community engagement, looking at various different stakeholders. We pulled from the, from their major themes. We started to do adjacency diagrams, and that's how this project took shape. So it's a very similar template and process that we will use for the Fitchburg Teen Center.
All right. Thank you, Rafiq. I appreciate you sharing the process and the design in terms of how we came up with the strategic goals and how in using those strategic goals, we came up to the, what the adjacencies would look like. One thing I would like to point out to everyone is that there's been comments about building, and we just want to let everybody know is we talked about approximate costs to operate. This, the numbers that you will see are based on not building new. It's based on either or. It could be a redeveloped space, or it could be building new. So for those who have been assuming that this is building from the ground up, that is not true. This left it open, because those kinds of details would actually need to come as part of phase three. Our job was to talk about, is it feasible based on the engagement that we did? And when, and then trying to understand what would be the size, scale, and scope of this teen center? And so that's what we've been bringing forth to everybody. I'm getting a note that I might need to turn off my camera because I'm breaking up, and so I apologize. So with that being, if you didn't hear me, just saying that the numbers that you see before you are not based on building new or being redeveloped.
We could hear you quite clearly. And that, we got, we could hear you in chambers. Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, then we're going to keep on going. Next up will be Carrie from Hope Community Capital to talk about best practices and experience, overview, the operational recommendations, and the financial capital considerations. So with that, Carrie.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Carrie Sanders, and I am the CEO of Hope Community Capital. We're a national community development and finance consultancy based here in Wisconsin. I had the great opportunity to come alongside this group to to look at what are some of the financial possibilities, potentials in terms of the capital stack as it relates to building, renovating, acquiring a building for the teen center, as well as some best practices and opportunities as it relates to ongoing operations. What we established through this process and building on my some 18 years of experience in helping facilities across the nation get built and operate well is that we are, for operating funding, we're going to be relying on a varied mix of grants and earned incomes, contracts, licensing, fees for usage of facility. And for capital funding, meaning the development of the building itself, we'll also be looking at quite a mix of fundings, grants, fundraising campaigns, contracts, on and on. For operations, we anticipate that we'll be following in some form or fashion as we continue to develop the details of this work, that we will be relying on operators with established organizations coming together to really serve the unique and yet very important needs of the teens that has come about through this. So we'll go through that. So just as an overview then, we, you saw on the adjacency diagram presented by Rafiq at JLA that, you know, if we could build this to accommodate all of the square footage that came about with this process, we'd be looking at plus or minus 10,000 square feet. What I did is kind of said, well, let's look at 8,000 square feet and see what that might end up to be. And then we realized that the focus programming needs can be around sports, arts, career development, kitchen, life skills, mental health. These are the categories. If we sift through all of those surveys, the 390 conversations and input from teens, these are the areas. So that's what we were really thinking about in terms of operational feasibility. And then in terms of public funding, what we put on the slide there is what we know is already committed, right? So we have from the city of Pittsburgh in the CIP, $4,114,938 and from Dane County, $925,000. So as Annette alluded to in her comments, at this time, of course, we don't know if this is going to be an opportunity for renovation or redevelopment of a current building or if we will need to purchase land. And if we do purchase land, we don't know what the remediation potential might be on that land or the demolition need might be. So there's a lot of details that we're going to be exploring in great depth in phase three. And then also square footage for programming will be refined in phase three based on the opportunities for redevelopment and land options. So. In terms of the estimated operational costs, what we did here is think about what was articulated by the teens and what we know just from, quite frankly, our library of work across the nation and in Wisconsin as it relates to community facilities. And what are some of those operating sources of money to keep, keep the building open and keep it thriving and focused on the teens? So of course, we've got your typical mini-layers here, but we've got government and operating grants. We've got contracts for programming with providers, individual and corporate donations, foundation grants, lease and license income from program providers, gymnasium or sport court rentals, often a great opportunity there. And then expense reimbursements for those that are using the facility and providing programming. We also were thinking about meal programming and some operational costs, but also funding that could serve that. And then again, program fees and registration fees. In terms of the estimated development cost, what we're looking at here are a bunch of unknowns. And so I'll just first start with the number one category, 1.4 million for land cost remediation. Where in the world did I come up with that number? Well, because we don't have a site selected, that's going to be something that comes into phase three. I looked at, you know, what I've been working on lately and I noticed that unfortunately, we've had to do a lot of remediation and acquisition of land has been a cost. So I put something quite conservative in there, but that 1.4 million, we don't know what that number is going to be. In terms of the hard cost, vertical cost, I've been speaking with a lot of constructors and developers of community facilities. And right now, the hard cost only, meaning the actual construction of the building is about $375 a square foot. And honestly, many of the community facilities that I've been working on lately are closer to 500 a square foot, depending on how you're going to be building out that facility itself. But I felt 375 was a reasonable starting point for the hard cost alone. Soft cost, which is your architecture, your engineering, your environmental and many other professional services and design services. I always put 20% of the hard cost and that's how we got that number. And then the furniture fixtures and equipment originally was closer to a million dollars based on the wonderful ideas and desires that the teens have for this center. But I did reduce it to half a million to see if we could be a little more creative there. I did include a contingency at 10% of hard cost. So all in, the total development cost with this budget, making a significant assumption on the land acquisition and cleanup cost of 1.4 million is $725 a square foot all in. Remembering again, hard cost is at 375. So this is 5.8 million. And if you recall, the, the money that has been committed already is a little under 5 million. So this exceeds that. Okay. And then in terms of just the estimated operational costs, the way we're understanding this potential model is that the city would not be paying the operational programming cost. That would not fall on the city in this scenario. And so what we have is really the city taking on managing insurance annually for the building, managing utilities that are not reimbursed from those tenants or operator who is operating programming or operators that are operating programming in the facility, but utilities above those reimbursed, any contract professional services that may be needed. And then physical building maintenance. And this is one FTE and it covers a variety of areas there. I also put in a reserve of $25,000 a year. And as the building ages, again, we don't know if this is a renovation or if it's new construction at this time, but as the building ages, of course, the reserves will need to increase. So in terms of the program operator, operational costs, we are looking, I think we need to get, yeah, thank you. We're looking at a little over a million a year. And so what I'm looking at there is a center director, about 1 point time, full-time equivalent. Why 1.5X full-time equivalent for a director? Well, because the hours that we're thinking about for this teen center include the whole day and then on into 9:00 PM at night. Okay? And then within that, we have operators that would be either engaging in a license, a contract, a lease, you could call it, we can, we can slice it any way. But their costs would be about 750,000 in order to enact the programming that has been proposed already and the desires of the teens for this center and that programming. So, and again, that little over a million a year, that's really in line with many of the community centers in our Madison-Fitchburg region. So that is in line for what you can expect on operational costs. But again, here, we're asking that the operators themselves, separate from the city, are figuring out how to cover those costs and deliver those programs. And I alluded to this just a minute ago, but envision daily operations, that matters, right? In terms of how much it's going to cost to run this center. So again, we're really looking at throughout the day until 9:00 PM. Again, just a little statistic there, we wanted to bring back in, anticipated that 25% of the teens in the area would be served. And then is there interest from operators? Yes, yes, there is. And you can see ever so often on these slides, you can see what the youth said as it relates to kind of the feasibility study and how we integrated and some of those things. That's it from me. Thank you so much.
Okay, so Joe, were we going to say anything on this section or did you want me to take this? I wasn't sure.
You can take it. Yeah, I'll save my comments for the end.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So what makes the teen center feasible? So this is when we get into sort of the recommendations, next steps, and then we of course take questions. So one of the things that we did in listening to all the wonderful feedback that we've received in terms of during the workshops and then even just talking with the city and the community, we put up two options and so you see them before you. So one is if we're thinking about this from the teen perspective, what their community vision is for this teen center, you can see that on the left, the cost would be about 5.8 million dollars. We're talking about square footage, plus or minus 8,000 square feet. We're talking about city costs at 169,000. And we're looking at operator costs at an estimated 885,000. And of course, again, the operator might be able to change that line item based on their own work and efforts. In looking at, on the right-hand side, you see from, looking at this on what was budgeted by the city, the cost would be 5 million, square footage would be plus or minus 7,000 square feet. City costs still stay the same. The operator costs might go down just because smaller space, so less programming might be available. And so that then would reduce their costs. But these are the two feasible options to consider. And so we wanted to put that before you so that you have something to look at and to notice. And again, the next piece is what makes the teen center feasible? You heard, listening to people's comments and also from the teens themselves. But the teen population in the Verona area school district alone, 641 teens, we expect to see 25% of those teens accessing this space. And there's a difference between daily usage and then usage based on drop-in and also just having teen-oriented events in that space. It could be much more than that. The youth population overall, in the city of Pittsburgh, 22% of the Pittsburgh population is under the age of 18 years old. So that is a fourth of your population. And so from our perspective, having something in Pittsburgh that meets the needs of your constituency, which represents 22%, having a teen center is not outside of the realms, especially if it's coming from the perspective of what they need, what they want and what they desire. And then it's located in a Healthy Neighborhood Initiative Priority Area, which is the Verona Road West, which as we all know, there are many apartments and townhomes. And there is a beautiful, rich diversity over in that corner of the community. And so from a location perspective, it's accessible, it's bikeable, it's possible, it's walkable. And again, it's close to youth populations. Over 80% of the teens and adults support the teen center. And when we did our engagement, it was said over and over again that there aren't any things, there isn't much for teens to do in Pittsburgh that's close to them in, by where they live. And we don't even have the skating rink anymore, that's gone. So, you know, in terms of what kinds of activities that are for teens in the area, only very structured things like school or work. But in terms of a place and a space where they can just show up and just be and have, yes, they will have structured programming, but the programming will be designed around and for teens, offering a myriad of things from social and emotional support to creative arts and bringing in, and bridging in programming from other organizations in the area. And obviously, what's really important, teen involvement is vital, evidence-based, transformational, prevention model. You get them in the beginning, as Nathan Beck had shared with us, when you get them in the beginning, it really shifts indicator, it shifts outcomes, it shifts impact and it really allows teens to be able to find their voice at a time in their life where, as someone so eloquently said, they are no longer little kids and they're not an adult. It is a very challenging time for them and they're looking for a space that allows them to be able to go through the growing pains without judgment. And that's what this space is about. Sorry. Okay. So next we have a few teen, we have a few teens that have their own statements and we'd like them to come up. We have Nebby, Joe and Simone, who will provide their comments.
I just also wanted to do a time check. We're at 8:06 PM. Just, I appreciate you guys speaking, but just wanted to, we have, do have on the agenda items. So just wanted you to be aware of that. Thank you. Please feel free to jump in.
Thank you so much.
Hello, I'm Simone. And the past few years, I'm sure for all of us, have been a complete roller coaster with both amazing and difficult moments. And I for one, having a safe and welcoming place where I could feel accepted, understood and free from pressure would have made a huge difference in my life. And it could do this for countless other high schoolers. Such a space not only would provide security, but also access to vital resources, things teens need, but may be too afraid to ask for or unable to obtain. These resources, whether health materials or mental health support, have the potential to significantly improve the lives of teens. It would be incredible to have a place that offers these services. And currently in Pittsburgh, there is no place that, no space that is dedicated to working this closely with teens to improve their wellbeing. This project is different. It is aimed directly at teens, a group often overlooked, and it finally offers them the respect, opportunities and understanding they deserve. Thank you.
I am Jobiel. And around March last year, I was pulled into this project after it visited our school's Equity Symposium to gather our feedback. And that right there, that's really what made the project special to me. Its development has been based on the input of young adults from all around the county. And it, it takes our ideas seriously. So this project gave us something that to me is priceless, a chance to leverage our voices. So we did. And we said that we wanted this teen center. We said that we wanted mental health services. We said that we wanted a place to feel safe. And I know that there has been a lot of comparison with our project to things like the YMCA. I know that it was discussed that there is a new YMCA that's going to be built in the area. But I looked at the filings with the city. That building is planned to include gym equipment and structured programs. So that is not quite the goal of the teen center. Our teen center is more about the space and less about the program. We are aiming to provide a space for teens where we can exercise the kind of independence and responsibility that will bring us success in college and life. It is our own journey. And to me, it's a space for self-improvement. To others, it might look more like a place to unwind. Maybe it's a place to socialize. Maybe it's a place to seek opportunities. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Neveah and I'm a senior at Verona area high school. And I entered this project my freshman year. I feel really lucky to have had the opportunity to share my experiences and thoughts while growing alongside it. Now that I'm nearing the end of my high school journey, I can look back on years past and reflect on everything I wish my peers and I could have used to be healthier, happier versions of ourselves. While some people are able to thrive in school and take advantage of its resources, others continuously struggle to feel included, supported or safe. I attribute this to the fact that at the end of the day, school is a place where a lot of our autonomy and independence is taken away and put in the hands of people who don't remember what it's like to be our age. The teen center is so important and unique in its approach to supporting our youth because it is truly considered and acted on what teens actually want and need. What we need is to be able to support and take care of each other, to feel trusted to manage our own spaces and to be allowed to exist in a space without pressure to conform to the standards of adults. If teens remain at the heart of this project and if adults continue to listen to us, I believe those needs can be met and that our youth will be stronger because of it. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Awafati. I go TW Madison and I'm currently a junior majoring in legal studies and public relations with a certificate in educational policies. I joined this project during phase one, during my senior year of high school. And I've stuck with it because I wholeheartedly believe in this initiative and I see the urgent need for it. This center will directly impact so many youth, especially those that I see myself in. Just a few years ago, I was one of the Just a few years ago, I was one of those teens navigating life with limited resources and support. And the more that I grow and experience and reflect on my upbringing, the more I realize how much, like, this center would have had like a positive difference on me and how I grew up in general. In addition to our core work within, like, youth engagement within this program, we spent a lot of time researching justice-involved youth, specifically those who have had run-ins with the juvenile justice system. And this research really opened my eyes to the challenges that they face and how limited the options for them are to, like, break that cycle and not go back into the system. I feel like the current system focuses too much on the punishment rather than providing support and help me to give these kids, like, a resource, but then also a second chance to make their lives better. And this teen center is meant to fill that gap, and it has the potential to fill that gap. And it can provide mentorship, mentorship, sorry, resources, a positive environment that steers youth away from trouble and offers them an alternative rather than the streets and helping them avoid the path that leads them back into the juvenile detention system. Me personally, I am the product of a community center. And as I grow up, I see a lot of my peers going into the juvenile detention system. And it is truly heartbreaking. And it's not, I'm here today not because I'm smarter than my peers, the people that I grew up with, but because of the resources that I had. And I just wish that they were given the same chance and were given the opportunity to break that cycle. And the lack of resources is what ends them back in that same cycle, which is why this project is so near dear to my heart and is so special to me. And the more that I learned about the justice-involved youth in Madison and within our county, the more it makes me realize that the system plays a huge role in putting them back into these detention centers. And so this project is so special to me because it's not just another, like, top-down decision. It gave me and all these other interns a voice and a real chance to feel heard, seen, and valued. We're not just, like, involved, but we're also within, like, the decision-making process of everything going on. So, so many decisions, like, in our county, within our government, all these decisions are being made for teens without getting their input, and we never get a seat at the table. But this center is different, and that's what's so special about this project. It's about reclaiming that power and giving teens the chance to shape something that will help them grow, find community, and truly feel, like, uplifted. I'm proud to be a part of this project and doing something that is tangible for, to empower young people and put them in spaces where they can engage, like, within our civil government, like we are doing today. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much to all of our youth for the role that they played in making this possible. Thank you so much. So here's where we're at. We're at the end. And these are the next steps. And the biggest next step is that here are the, some of the startup actions. The council is the one that really needs to determine how we move forward with the information that's been provided. And conversations can happen about what that looks like based on the data that's been presented to you tonight. We recommend that there be a continuation of the teen intern program, in particular, ensuring that we include justice-involved youth as part of that program. It's very vital, as you can see, in order for this teen center to work, yes, the city has been asked to take a part of it, but it's for the maintenance of the building. But what's critical and key is identifying an operator for the teen center. And as we said, there are some very viable options for a particular operator or a couple of operators could be, depending on when this would launch. We also recommend that there be a Pittsburgh Youth Committee be developed as part of Pittsburgh Committee and Council so that they can really have an opportunity to listen to youth on not only this, but also some of the other actions and activities that are coming from the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative work that's happening. A lot of that is designed with thinking about how to engage youth. And I know even in talking with the library, they're very interested in understanding what youth are interested in in terms of what they can be making available. So one of our recommendations in doing this work is that there be a youth committee that be created as part of the Pittsburgh alongside the council. We also recommend that the Friends of the Teen Center start fundraising development efforts to help align with some of the expenses and operating costs that would come with the teen center and really be a support. They're very interested and want to do this work. So we think that that needs to happen. And then, of course, you know, there's been conversation about, is this redeveloped building? Or is this land? In order to determine that, we need to have a Phase III RFP prepared by the city of Pittsburgh so that a building or space, land, be developed and needs to be identified and determined. As JLA was explaining, you know, architect renderings, building of, you know, of the building and of the space. And then, as Carrie said, as part of her presentation, that's where you really start to understand what are the costs and estimates for operations and building and construction and renovation. But we feel like identifying an operator for the teen center is key along with getting out the door a Phase III RFP so you can really know, is it redevelopment? Or is it land that we're looking at, et cetera? So those are our recommendations, and we're happy to take questions at this time.
I did just want to say thank you to all of your young people here today. It's not easy to come here and speak in front of, you know, the council. So thank you for being here. Really, really powerful to hear your words, so thank you for that. I did want to open up to the council. We are very behind on the schedule, and we have other people here to present. So I would like to constrain this conversation as much as possible. Ideally, let's keep comments to one per person. This is not the last conversation we'll have about this. Anyone that wants to speak, please raise your hand. I saw Nicole.
I will try and be as quick as possible. I do have more than one question. And while everyone's here, I do want to get through them. I'd honestly rather delay a couple other topics than shortchange this one. So my first question, it seems like on the slide, you listed some orgs that you've spoken to that people in the community fairly have brought up, like, hey, is this overlapping services? So I guess my question, in all of the conversations you had with the Boys and Girls Club, with the YWCA, with all of, Briar Patch, I think, was on there too, did any of them say, please don't do this because we have services that are duplicative, right? Like, you shouldn't build a teen center. You should just join our center, and we have a mission and vision that aligns with yours. Did any of that feedback come back in terms of, like, those organizations here saying, no, this would be completely duplicative or this is not necessary?
So this is Annette. I'll jump in first, but also my colleagues are there. But based the work that Carrie and I did in doing those interviews, that's, we didn't hear that at all. In fact, they were quite excited about it. And really, what they did is they talked to us about what it would take to do it, and they were very supportive. I think that they under, that they only have so much capacity, given where they're located, and not all of the places and spaces are necessarily in alignment. When I think about Briar Patch in particular, the youth that they serve aren't necessarily the same youth that we were talking about. And the, we were sharing with them the vision that came forth from the youth. So what all of the different operators we're talking about is make, building bridges and seeking opportunities to either come to the teen center to do programming, or could we have the youth come to them to do programming? But anyone else? Carrie, I don't know if you want to add anything or tailor your work?
I think, I think that actually answers my question just to, just to kind of stay with brevity because I don't want to steal from, from anybody else. Thank you, Annette. I think that's really helpful to make sure that, as the community has stated, we're not duplicating work and that orgs here aren't feeling that. In my next question, in the operator selection, like, I own my own business, and if I were to invest a ton of capital into something, I would want to make sure that I have some recurring income or a lot of clients that I could bill for that capital investment. So for your operator selection, is there the option to sign, like, a longer-term agreement to say, like, hey, this operator is agreeing to cover the operating costs? Or these two kind of cover the operating costs for the first five or 10 years? Is that something that's being considered?
So that didn't come up in the conversation, but I actually wonder if Karen Coller could just say something? But she is an actual operator. And Karen, what would be your response if someone approached you with that? What would be your response? Is that something you?
Hi, Annette. Sorry, as I'm trying to make my way home from work, I would say absolutely yes. I'd be interested in negotiating something like that. This is an investment in our future.
Great. My next question, on the location, you, on one of the slides on location, it said you listed it as multi-generational. I know some in our community brought up community space, right? So is the intention to also use this space? And it kind of, I guess I could combine questions. Like, when kids are in school, clearly, we don't, we don't ideally want them in the teen center. We want them at school, unless, you know, they don't have school that day. But like, during those school hours, is this a center that could be feasibly used for other parts of our community?
So what we heard from the teens is that they really want to have a voice and what that looks like, because what they don't want is for something to, all of a sudden, the wheels to come off the bus. Literally, in terms of, like, who is the space for and who is it designed for? So a lot of what we heard is that, you know, obviously, these teens have families, their siblings, also their parents, and, you know, kinfolk, as, as we, I like to say in my own community. And so I think there was a thinking that there certainly could be some ways to have conversations about use of space, and they're open to it, but they want to be at the table when having that conversation in terms of design. And then to your point about teens and during the day, there was some light conversation with the school districts about what could that space look like in terms of, you know, what would it look like in terms of teens who aren't at the school but need to be at school? Could the teen center be a place where that could happen? Because it would be closer to home if they're not able to be in the schools. So there was some light conversation around that, too. But again, there needs to be more specifics put into that. But I do think, to answer your question, I think there's openness, but the teens want to be at the table to be able to have that conversation about what that would look like.
Can I just add to that? So I know one space in the Madison area is the Goodman Community Center, and they have a separate building specifically for older youth. And one of the way, some of the ways I've seen that space utilized during the day is conferences. So if there are, like, youth-centered or focused conferences, that space might be rented out by, you know, an organization or an institution. I've also seen it used as rental space for other events, which brings in revenue. And I've also seen that space used for night events, family programming, and other things like that. So I'm not saying this in relation to this space, but I'm saying there is a precedence in other community spaces for that.
Gotcha. The last, the last question, and maybe the only point I will add is, I just want to make clear that, like, a really strong way to strive for community safety is making sure kids feel connected to their community. I know we've brought up safety a lot, and I really want to segregate this from the referendum around safety, right? The referendum question was put to voters, and the voters did not approve it, which is 100% why we put things on ballots. That is, the voice of the voters was heard. The intent was not, now let's fund the things we didn't approve by taking other things out of the budget. That's not how this works. And so I do want to drive forward that when I was on the Verona School Board, what we found was if you want to put kids in schools, you increase your amount of extracurriculars that you're providing because it gives them a reason to go to school. If you want to, a lot of people say you have to behave to belong. A lot of people believe you actually have to belong to behave. And so there is this flip of the script that kids who feel more connected to their community make for safer kids, which makes for a safer community. So I just want to make sure those two things were being conflated, and it's a really false equivalent. And I just want to kind of, like, stop that narration and state that, like, those are two separate items. I'm really happy to also see an option that was in the budget. I don't really have an interest in going over budget, right? $5 million was allocated for this in the budget. I think that's where we need to stay. We asked the police facility to do the same, and I think it's only fair to ask that this do the same. So thank you for providing an on-budget option. Okay, sorry, Gabrielle, I'm very done.
Other questions? Jay?
You know, I've been hearing over and over and over and over and over that this is going to duplicate stuff that's already being done. And I hope the people who have said that heard tonight that it's not. This is providing services that aren't being provided by other organizations. They aren't being provided by the Boys and Girls Club. They aren't being provided by the Y. They aren't being provided by even Briar Patch. This is, this is providing, if it gets built, this is providing unique services to a unique segment of the population that has different needs. And I am so happy that the young people here tonight and other ones that we've seen over the years who have come to these meetings. I mean, it's not like this just arose out of the ashes yesterday. I mean, this is something that's been talked, I, when I was mayor in 2009, I was talking about building a teen center because it's something we needed. So, you know, it's, it's something that's been out there. There have been a lot of people working on it, and there have been a lot of needs identified. I would like to hear, I would like to hear more about the specific types of programming, and we heard a little bit of that tonight, and I think that's good. So I think it's important for us to go to the next phase and, and get some more answers to the questions that some of us still have. But I think this is going to be a project that will provide, that will fill a hole, that's a gaping hole that needs to be, that needs to be addressed. If we, you know, it's, safer communities is not just about hiring more police officers and more firefighters and more paramedics and keeping the potholes filled. It also involves finding ways to engage the community. We have a senior center in the, in the building next door to this one. And that senior center is part of our Safe Communities efforts to make the place safer so that people don't fall through the cracks. And this is just another one of those things. It's another segment of the population that's being underserved. And we need to take the initiative and make something happen here. So I hope that the council will move forward with this and get us to the next level.
Thanks, Jay. Joe?
Thank you so much to our interns, our fellows, and all the organizations that have been involved. This is truly unprecedented in terms of the level of involvement of people, some of which are not even old enough to vote in making decisions that impact our community. So I just want to applaud you for your effort. I've sat in a lot of your internship meetings, and I've seen the thoroughness of your analyzation of data, of your community engagement, of the skill sets that it took today to get in front of people that many adults are scared to do. And it's, these are transferable skills that will serve you later in life and will also serve our community. So I really, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate you over the past four years. I just want to touch on one point that was not made. It was alluded to in the presentation, but that we haven't discussed thoroughly in depth, which is fundraising. I, we had a person who was unable to make it today. Her father had a heart attack, so she was, she was planning on speaking. But her name is Kate Prehn. She lives in the Jamestown neighborhood. She's about my age, and she's a mother of a young child and also works for the UW Foundation and is a professional fundraiser. Kate, along with several folks that are on the Friends of the Teen Center, have committed not only to searching for grants, but also, you know, to, to reaching out to other retired fundraising professionals to be able to supplement, you know, costs for this project as well. fundraising professionals to be able to supplement, you know, costs for this project as well. But as Alder Raffedari stated, you know, we have a budgeted amount and our, you know, consultants have done their due diligence in looking at an amount that stays within budget. And I just want to reemphasize Karen, who's the CEO of Centro Respano, you know, who does this, who really does this work, as well as Nathan, who's, you know, been involved in this work at a systems level and at a local level for years, who are giving you the facts and the data on, you know, the, not only the fuzzy need for this, but also the hard evidence for its impact. So I thank, you know, the council as well for your questions, your criticisms, and also folks in the community for bringing up, you know, hard questions to ask. And I feel like this team today has done a pretty thorough job in addressing most of them.
Julia?
Okay, so first, I want to say thank you to everyone who came here, to the teens, you know, the young people. So the other thing that I want to mention, something that I discussed with Annette, is, you know, because this is a huge investment for our community, and maybe we need to start doing like a pilot program with a vendor and a location. And I was thinking that another way we can start with this process on a small scale while we do the fundraising, to continue to allocate more funds, because the more expensive thing for the city will be the operational cost, a money that right now we don't have for the 2026 budget, we don't have it for the 2027 budget, you know? So that one will be critical to fund for an endowment, you know, fund to pay for those operational costs. That one could be another option. But I was thinking that next year, by summer, we, they have in North Fish Gacio Road, this is a small community center, could be a place where we can pilot the program with a vendor. And also, this is going to give you the opportunity to ask to determine if the vendor that we look is a vendor that we can trust for this programming. So something that I will, I will ask you to consider, too, is we can start testing, doing a pilot while we are still in the fundraising phase. Because this is a huge investment. I am support of the teen center. I want to say I was supporting with Joe Maldonado in 2020. My biggest concern is, it's not the capital to build or to renovate, because that one could be, I think the cheaper option is to go to a renovator place, is the operational cost. So I think the fundraising effort should be placed on looking, covering those costs because they're going to be too much for the city right now, especially with all the priorities that we have since the referendum failed. So this is something I want to put on the table. I think, you know, investing in our young people is an investment for our community. This is how we build community. And, you know, and I am open to more discussion about this.
Donald?
Real quick, I won't beat a dead horse, but again, I just wanted to thank the youth for coming out, some former youth of mine I see in the audience and proud y'all got up there and spoke, so it was good to see everyone. I do have been in support of the teen center, but I do have the same kind of reservations in terms of the operational costs at this point right now. So I would like for them to continue their study and then also delve deeper into kind of how funds can be raised to maintain this facility, especially from the operational level currently.
Jim?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. One of my concerns is, you know, just having a facility just dedicated to youth. You know, we also have seniors that can't even get to the senior center. Then we have library services that we need to get out into the community. And, you know, I'm thinking, is there a way that we can kind of combine those things? You know, because all of those are our needs within the city. And then we also have Southdale that we have to consider. So I would like just for us to consider, you know, those options and, you know, also think about those seniors that can't even get here because we don't have transportation, you know, for those, for those services. And the libraries here, which Jay will always say, it's in the wrong place. So the only thing I could think about is, you know, how do we get those services out to the different parts of the community also? But thank you for the presentation.
Bill?
Yeah, thanks, everybody. And I think one thing, just kind of building off of what Jim said, you know, location is key here. And I think having this facility on the west side of Verona Road and the north side of McKee is going to be huge in terms of accessibility. So I think that location is great in that if we can, I look forward to Phase Three and coming up with, you know, brainstorming ideas for how we might be able to minimize the financial impact to the city. I don't know if we can combine this with the new Verona School that goes out, is going to be built, or if we can combine this with, you know, multifamily housing or something and possibly share in maintenance costs, you know? Again, I look forward to Phase Three.
Thanks, Bill. I'm going to invite our next presenter to come up while I just make a couple of comments and wrap this up. Who are we doing next? Are we going to have?
Mike, the economic development team is going to do a brief presentation, and then we're going to be followed by Gary Gorman. Thank you for your patience and for waiting, both of our future guests. I just wanted to follow up and just say, echo some of the comments of my colleagues. I think safety in our community is much broader than just police and fire and EMS. And we have to look holistically when we talk about community safety. And I think Nicole's comments about, you know, belonging creates safety is a really important point to make. That's not to say that there aren't concerns about financing, but I think there's a lot of road to go to figure out how this is going to work. And I think stopping at this point is ill-advised. And I also think there is a tendency, I think, when there are financial concerns, valid financial concerns, to just have this scarcity mindset where you're pitting things against each other. And those conversations are important and valid, but we also need to be thinking about the bigger picture and what's possible in our city. And I think we need to think about how we can make this work because it's a really beautiful concept, and we need to continue engaging with how we make it work, and the fundraising might be a really big piece of that. And, but it's going to be a challenge. So I will turn it over to our next topic, which is Agenda Item 6B, Housing Initiatives and Programs Update and Discussion from our Economic Development Department. And for the council, please feel free to take notes. I don't think I'm going to, we're going to do questions after this presentation, but we're, so we can roll into our next presentation. But keep notes in case we want to follow up by email with questions with our department.
The floor is yours. Yeah.
Thank you, Council President Gerhard. We appreciate the opportunity to be back in front of the council again this evening to provide some updates on housing initiatives and programs. And in the interest of time, we're going to kind of reverse the order a little bit here. Do I need to address anything?
Okay. I'll let you. Okay. There we go. Are we in business? Okay. Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
We're going to just, we were going to provide kind of some program updates and a little bit of overview, but in the interest of time, we're going to switch to our partners here and have them share. We've got a proposal from Gorman and Company and a program update on the rent-to-own program that are both focused on a pathway to homeownership for the missing middle, which is at 80% to 100% of median income, which was identified as a priority in our Pittsburgh Housing Plan. Gorman has a proposal to share for affordable single-family homeownership, and then our HNA advisors will provide an update on the rent-to-own program model that we've been vetting through both the Housing Advisory Committee and through CEDA. Each concept has unique strategies and a pathway to homeownership, and also both would need some policy decisions by the council as they would move forward there. So we can kind of answer some of those questions after you hear the presentations and everything on what those kind of policy considerations would be. CEDA staff, we're all excited about both of the programs, both the Gorman proposal and the HNA program model for rent-to-own. And with our financial toolkit that we have, both with our TID for Housing Dollar Bucket and also with the existing tax increment districts that we have in place, we're in a position, a unique position compared to most communities, that we actually can implement both of these programs. We don't have to choose one or the other, but we can move forward both of these, which again was a priority identified in our Pittsburgh Housing Plan. So with that, I will have Gary Gorman and Ted Matcom come up to take us through the Gorman proposal, and then we've got Mike and Steve from HNA Advisors here, who will give us an update on the rent-to-own program, and then we'll all be around, too, to help answer any questions going forward here.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, I think that's. I just want to see what. Okay. Yeah, somebody want to, you want to sit here, Ted? Just advance, he said? Sure. I can let you have it.
We will try to be as brief as possible. You've got the materials. We're not going to recite everything that's in your materials, but just as a matter of background, my name is Gary Gorman. I'm a longtime Pittsburgh resident. I live at 5451 Wayland Road. So as a Pittsburgh resident, I saw the presentation of the lease-to-own program, and, you know, there's definitely merits to it. I'm not here to criticize it. We just have a little different perspective, and we want to present an alternative to the community. So we thought about, well, let me give a little background on our company first. So 40 years ago, I started an affordable housing development company. So that's grown to have 700 team members. We're in 12 states, and we've completed 171 projects over those 40 years. So this isn't our first rodeo. So when I discussed at the office how we might take a little bit different approach, a key member of, that I discussed it with was Ted Matcom, who's sitting to my right. He is our Wisconsin Market President, so he leads the development initiatives in the state of Wisconsin. So here's the concept that we came up with. We thought if we could produce affordable, single-family homes and partner with the city to do it, that would be something that would be very desirable to the market and would address that quote-unquote "missing middle." You know, the biggest issue we've seen is, A, the price of housing, and B, the affordability of coming up with the down payment. So let's talk about those two things. With respect to the price of the housing, we're proposing that we do this project without a development fee or development profit. And you might say, why would somebody that's in their right mind, that's in the private sector, do this? The answer to that question is that we operate in about 25 different communities in 12 states, and we think having an affordable, single-family route in our toolbox, so to speak, where we can show a precedent of partnering with the community, makes a lot of sense, and that would be a repeatable model. And I couldn't think of a better place to experiment with that than in my hometown. So that's the proposal. So if we're essentially doing it without any development compensation, what we're asking is that the city partner with us and contribute as well. And that contribution would take the form of, number one, the city contributing the infrastructure, roads, undergrounds, and so on, that normally a developer is charged with, and then the developer adds that on to the price of the housing. Secondly, we're asking that the city use funds to provide soft loans to create a down payment for the purchaser of the home. So for example, if the buyer could come up with a 20% down payment, they don't have to pay private mortgage insurance, which can add $250 to $400 a month in their payment. So those two components are really the essence of our proposal. So what makes the most sense is that this experiment, this partnership, would be executed in a TIF district that already exists. We have had conversations with the owner of the property in TID 11. We have a signed letter of intent with Jim Foside, who is the owner of the property in TID 11. That is not a detailed binding purchase contract. If this goes forward, if this kind of partnership goes forward, we would have to pursue that with Jim. We don't have that yet. But what we have is a statement that he's willing to continue that conversation and is interested in working with us. So that's the essence of it. We've included some pictures of houses that we think, well, that we know are modest size that can be built at a reasonable price, but yet are aesthetically pleasing and are desirable to the marketplace. They're actually in Telluride, Colorado, and I included some pictures of those homes that I think are very attractive. So that's the essence of our proposal. Ted, what would you like to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate Gary's comment about, you know, the missing middle housing. We've done a lot of apartments around the country, and most of those apartments have been affordable, some have been market rate. But we really believe that, and we've done a lot of R&amp;D, like research and development in our, in our firm, to kind of create this $300,000 home that people can build, you know, buy, three-bedroom, kind of two-bath with a garage home that I think would just kind of fly off the shelf if you built it. And in order to build that, we think we have a good formula here that could get us there. But we think that that type of home is missing in the marketplace, and we believe that our firm has the ability to kind of create that based on our experience. And again, we would take most of the risk on this, on the financing, and we believe that this is something that if a partnership with a, you know, private-public partnership could bring this to the table. So we'd really love to enter into this partnership with the city. Thank you.
Just to follow up on the question of minimizing the rest of the city, we would provide the financing for the construction of the homes. We would not ask that the city's money for that down payment loan come in prior to completion of the home and the procurement of a buyer. So it would essentially come in at the closing of the sale of the finished home to the buyer. So you would not be providing construction financing. The infrastructure is a different component of the financing, and we'd have to work out the details of how that would go about. So that's the essence of it. We don't want to get into all the minutia. It's late, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for staying to present this. We really appreciate it. Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got just a few questions, Gary. What would the, what would the size of these houses be?
Yeah, roughly 1,300 to 1,400 square feet.
Is that, would that be like two, three bedrooms?
Yes.
Two bathrooms?
Right.
Okay.
And a garage.
I, one of the concerns that I have about the city providing the infrastructure, and I don't have a problem with spending money on stuff like this, but what I would like to do, and by the way, I appreciate you guys coming in and using the phrase "missing middle" properly, because up until now, half the time when I hear the phrase "missing middle," it's referring to people. And missing middle is not about people. Missing middle is about housing types.
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
So, and I think this $300,000 housing type is part of that. I think that's right in there. I was talking with someone else today about some of these proposals, and I was suggesting between... to do, and by the way, I appreciate you guys coming in and using the phrase "missing middle" properly, because up until now, half the time when I hear the phrase "missing middle," it's referring to people, and "missing middle" is not about people. Missing middle is about housing types.
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
So, and I think this $300,000 housing type is part of that. I think that's right in there. I was talking with someone else today about some of these proposals, and I was suggesting between 280 and 320, and you're right in the middle, so yay. One of the concerns that I have about the city providing an upfront subsidy is what keeps it in that missing middle in the long term?
I can tell you my thought on that, but this is a partnership, so I wouldn't be the only voice. I think building wealth for a homeowner is a key component of any housing strategy. So I would not advocate for limiting how someone could profit from appreciation of their home. I think they should build wealth, and I think that's a key component of a whole strategy.
And I get that, and I'm down with that to a degree. The problem is if we're using taxpayer money to subsidize it, then the wealth that's being generated is basically a transfer of wealth from the Pittsburgh taxpayers to the owner of this house. And to me, that's problematic. I would rather not do that. Now, one thing that I was talking about with the person I was talking about earlier today is, I know condos are not being built right now for a number of reasons, but you know, we have this housing fund, and theoretically, we could self-finance some sort of condo project, like attached row houses or something to that effect, and then sell those off, and because it would be built on far less land, because, you know, other efficiencies of building, you know, instead of building walls on both sides, you're only building a wall on one side. You know how all that works. I wonder if that type of a project might be a better project for the use of this fund?
Well, I think the alternative proposal that you hear after us is more along the lines of what you're talking about. We think single-family homes are desirable in a lot of communities, and we're asked in a lot of the communities that we're in if we can come up with an affordable, single-family strategy. This is what we're hoping to accomplish here, you know, by essentially doing this without compensation. One comment in terms of the subsidy by the City of Pittsburgh, clearly would be a subsidy, but we are proposing that at the point where the house is sold or refinanced, that soft loan get paid back. So it wouldn't be a grant or a gift, at least the way we envision it.
Well, I guess the concern I have still is it's only affordable once, and I would prefer to have products that we are building be affordable into the future. I don't know how to make that happen.
Other questions?
I want to add something. So I want to say thank you, Gary and Ted, for coming, and you know, I am very supportive of this project. I think if we want to, you know, if we want to be part of the solution on the housing crisis, we need to approach, we have to look at different options with a different mind. And I think that, you know, the site where they are looking is in a tax incremental district, so you know, we can use TIF to finance the infrastructure. This is what it is. So I don't think that, I don't have a concern that you have, Jay, and I think if we want to be serious about what we can do as a city to improve this condition, I think we need to have, we have to have some scheme on the game, you know, as a municipality. So I am looking at this proposal with, you know, with a lot of potential, because I think the impact that we can do is not going to be only 10 families, it can be maybe 100 families. So this is what I would like you to see, guys, to this project, too.
Bill?
So I think one of our goals, and you'll see this in the sustainability plan coming out soon, is a reduction in vehicle miles traveled. How can we reconcile single-family homes with a reduction in personal motor vehicle miles? Like, I struggle to understand how we can put single-family homes on a transit line. The density just isn't there to support that. Do you have any words of wisdom?
I really don't. You know, I wish I had a good answer to that. If there was a site that was adjacent to some sort of mass transit facility... Well, I can tell you that in Phoenix, Arizona, there's a light rail system, and we have built four projects now adjacent to that light rail. That makes a lot of sense. If there was that sort of mass transit corridor, that... And what we're talking about here is a relatively dense, single-family application, you know, roughly 10 units per acre. That's, those are relatively small lots. So it's not, you know, five-acre lots that would be spread out in a typical suburban application. And if there was a site that was in a TIF district, so the financing worked, and it was next to mass transit, that would be great. The site that we have the letter of intent on is not adjacent to that. Yeah, it's adjacent to Highway MM and between MM and Highway 14.
Actually, I believe the 65 goes on right past that site.
Yeah. 65 goes over.
To Terre Bessa.
Right. Obviously, that does not have all day and weekend service currently, but perhaps it will in the future.
Yeah.
65 is a bus line?
Yeah.
Dave?
I want to express my support for this. I've known Mr. Gorman a long time. When our, one of my beloved deceased parish priests, Father Mike, was put in charge of trying to figure out what to do with Bishop O'Connor Center, he turned to Mr. Gorman to come up with a plan, and he's made a difference in the communities. And the number of this, the 90, I think that's what we need to look at. You know, our other proposals really weren't that many units, and I didn't think they made that much of a difference. So I would encourage us to consider this. If it's in a TID, the infrastructure, then we, you know, we would get that back as property, you know, having developed property there. So I think this is a good plan, and we definitely should consider it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just jump in and say, thank you so much for coming. I think this is a really interesting proposal. The fact that you think you can bring single-family homeownership for $300,000, I think is really impressive, and I'm really excited to see if we move forward this, how that looks. I work for Habitat for Humanity, and our homes appraised for about $270,000, so to do something like this, I know that's a real challenge. And I think also, looking at the broader picture of the affordable housing crisis, we really need for-profit companies to be investing in this, along with municipalities and other organizations. Like, it has to be everybody. So the fact that you're willing to bring this to us and put some real investment behind it and financing behind it is really appreciated, and I want to see more of that, and I am encouraged to have you come forward with this, and I think it's a really interesting opportunity. And again, those more affordable, single-family homes, they just don't exist right now anywhere. Nicole?
Sorry, I just had one clarifying question. So to go back, the only, like, net amount that Pittsburgh wouldn't recoup would be any interest that is potentially lost by the $50,000 that we provide as a down payment. Is that correct?
One of the details that we need to work out is, is there an accruing component of interest on that soft loan?
Okay.
I think we need to make the structure such that the lender that provides 80% of the financing truly considers that to be a down payment, but I think we could also build an accruing interest so that Pittsburgh is treated fairly.
So there wouldn't be maybe a payment component to that, but there would be an accruing interest component?
Gotcha.
So when it's refinanced, it would all be paid in full?
We have now stepped out of the realm of my financial acumen, so thank you very much.
You have an accountant sitting to your left.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Next up, I believe we're going to have the rent-to-own presentation. We have had quite a bit of conversation about this already, so I hope everyone had a chance to review that Housing Advisory Committee meeting where we dug into this deep, and I believe we're going to bring this up.
And we have Mike and Steve from H&amp;A to give us an update on the rent-to-own program.
Great. Welcome.
Do you want me to run the machine here? Otherwise, you just hit the arrow-down button.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, thank you again for giving us an opportunity to be here tonight, ladies and gentlemen. And it's been a couple of years now that we've been working on this for you, and in spite of that, it seems like this is one of the first times within that timeframe that we've actually been in front of the committee of the whole. So we're very pleased to have the chance to be here tonight. To sort of give an overview, and I know that you've been very patient with us as well as with the, this evening, we have prepared an outline that we were going to use, but I think we're going to go quickly through it for you. I know you've had a chance to see it. We've had several meetings that preceded this with the Housing Advisory Committee and with CEDA. There had been an invitation to all of you to submit questions, and we appreciate the fact that we did get a couple of responses. One from a member of CEDA, Jenny Sanders, had submitted a list of questions that we provided a memorandum in response to that I'm not going to go through tonight, but you have a copy of it, and you're welcome to ask us questions if you'd like about any of that. Also, the mayor had provided an outline, and I think we do have some answers, Mayor, for you this evening in our outline, in our presentation. Before I get into that, I would like to just digress just a second and say, what an exciting proposal from Gorman. Gary and Ted, I think you brought something forward that's really exciting, and I think that if it's something that the city sees as being beneficial to you, you've got your Class A developer here that is second to none in Wisconsin in terms of being able to deliver a product like that, and so I think you're blessed to have the chance to consider that. Our plan is different, and I'd like to just provide some distinguishing comments about what makes it different and what would make it perhaps also attractive to the city for your consideration. Just as an overview of what this program really is, it's designed to be flexible as to the product type. We went through a process with you all that, in which you collectively, the committees helped design the concept of what you wanted to try to achieve, and that was the townhouse home product of a certain size and certain level of finish. So that's what we've been pursuing. Nevertheless, this program has the ability to adapt to any type of housing, including even the style that the Gorman Company was proposing. Under our program, the city would be the initiator. It would be the Community and Economic Development Authority that would take responsibility for building and initially retaining ownership until such point in time as the necessary equity were built by each of the tenants to enable them to obtain private financing. And we're projecting that that would take between four and eight years, depending on whether they were in the 80% or the 100% median income bracket, which is where we're targeting this. I think very important here is that the rental payments would never exceed 30% of their income. This is a standard that the industry holds for affordability, and it's very important that not just the basic rental costs, but also all of the costs associated with homeownership are included in that 30%, which I'll get into in a minute in more detail. What happens here is that as far as the money, the monies come in and are retained in a fund, the monies that exceed the amount of operational costs are retained as equity to help that tenant become the homeowner. Once they get to a 20% equity level, that's when that conversion occurs. And it's important to note that at the point of sale, we have designed this program so that at that four-year point or that eight-year point, they would still not be paying more than 30% of their income for the mortgage, taxes, insurance, and all the other costs associated with that housing. We tried to design the program to minimize city staff time with ourselves as H&amp;A, acting in the role of the developer, but combining that with the builder and property management as a team in order to execute the program. We would, we are projecting that over 90% of the initial advance would be repaid within that 48-year period, and in addition, a significant additional amount of the uptick in appreciation could also be recouped if the city wanted to do that. This is still an outstanding policy question, but there is a mechanism that would allow for that to be retained, and we'll talk about the dollars that are involved in that more specifically in just a second. So who are we targeting here? It is that middle-market segment, and we do think that the programs that are out there really are not hitting the market as originally envisioned, and this was articulated by your own housing plan and the Dane County Regional Housing Strategy, which this program would directly address. We also think that a unique feature of this program is that it enables a tenant that might have a marginal credit situation to build their credit score, to improve their credit rating, so that they would have the opportunity at the point in time that they converted to obtain that loan needed to make the necessary commitment on housing. Apologize for my voice here. We think that this is something that we're going to spend a little more time in a minute talking about. Steve, do you want to go ahead with the next slide?
Sure. I think what struck us after the last committee of the whole was is that the council has changed substantially since 2021, when we originally introduced the idea, and in 2022, when we were hired to move ahead with Phase 2. We had started down Phase 2, and there was a number of issues that needed to be addressed, and we'd really spent the last two years addressing those issues in regards to vetting the program and talking to various partners that were available within the area. We did complete that, and coming back to the council, I think we were struck by the fact that we hadn't had that dialogue and wanted to make sure that everyone had an understanding of the concept, the concept as to how it worked. And since that time, since 2021, as we all know, going to the next slide, you know, costs have changed substantially. That inflation has occurred, and there's been an increase in the model, and probably the biggest difference in the model from 2021 to where we are now is the self-financing piece of that. We made that change so that we were able to continue to meet the objectives that we had identified for the program, which was the 30% of income, being able to get that, to be able to purchase the home in less than 10 years, and in this case, four to eight years, as we talked about, depending upon what their income is. Since then, we have updated the model a couple times. This last time we updated it, all of the variables that we used were at their peak. So all of the numbers that we've presented to you previously, as well as this, have not changed, but they were prepared then when inflation had just occurred as its highest. Mortgage rates were at 7.3%, which is the assumption that we made in preparing the model. And so we think that there's been improvement in the model since then. Interest rates could be 1% to 1.5% down. By interest rates being down, it makes the program more affordable. It also may make, provide us with the ability that we could pick up a loan portion of this and be more efficient in the use of TIF instead of doing 100% financing. That would require us, though, to update the model, and that would be a decision that you would need to make if we were to proceed at this point. What we discovered, and just as a quick update, in the period of time in which we did our due diligence in regards to some of the questions that had been identified, we talked with over 10 housing organizations. We had Corals &amp; Brady, the law firm, look at the concept, help address, help confirm the concept in itself in terms of the approach that we had proposed to take, as well as provided ideas on how to mitigate various issues that had been identified by the city. I think all in all, we had about 30-some issues identified in terms of that strategies were provided. provided in which we could mitigate that. The other thing we wanted to make, to point out, is that in the model, and I know last time we talked with you, there was a lot of discussion about the cost, about the model. And the model that we were building, the townhome program, 10 units with the size of about 1,400 square feet, was something that was developed by the community. That certainly can be revisited. This program is flexible, and that certainly is something that should be considered as we move forward to see if, in fact, that's specifically the type of product the council still wants to undertake, given the change that's occurred within the council. Mike, you want to go to the next one?
This next slide is addressing a few things that we felt were important to correct an impression on. I know that, you know, we're not here tonight to, in essence, compete with what Gary and Ted are proposing. We're here to explain our program, and the council can decide whether it wants to pursue both of them or one or the other of them, which we would certainly respect that, whatever that decision ends up being. But I want to make sure that we explain exactly what our program is and isn't doing here. And I think there were some, perhaps misunderstandings that were laid out in the package that you had submitted here that I want to make sure that we're on the same page with. So with that, just to clarify, the question was raised, under this program, who would act as the developer? Who would actually run through the process of coordinating and obtaining the diligence and going through the steps and all of the procedures that normally would be done? The answer to that would be HNA, our firm, along with the builder, would walk through that process in accordance with all of the steps that are normally expected to be performed. The one thing about this is that we expect that that conversion to homeownership would occur between four and eight years. Four years for someone that was at the 100% level of income, and eight years if they're at the 80%, not 10 to 15 years. Another thing that came up was the question of deductibility and the fact that, under this program, for personal income tax purposes, as a renter, they wouldn't be in a position to deduct interest or taxes on their property. That is true. But the reality is that with the standard deduction now, today at $29,000, a person in the 80% to 100% income range is very unlikely to be in a position to accumulate enough dollars, even with the mortgage and the property tax, to achieve that $29,000 level. And that's why 90% of tax filers today, according to the IRS, are taking the standard deduction. In terms of the cost, we realize that the cost is an important number for the question of affordability. And of course, we've seen the cost that we started with escalate substantially. We were at about $325,000 in 2021, and now it's a little over $415,000. And the design really dictates that. Given the parameters that are out there, we think that if the community is willing to modify its desires in terms of that standard of design, obviously, that number can be reduced. And Steve will get into some of the ways that that can happen. I think one of the things that's very important to keep track of, no matter what program that you're going to be examining, is the question of affordability, though. And it's that 30% number that I think really should be held up as the standard to be respected. And that means it's not just the mortgage cost, it's also the insurance, the property taxes, the utilities, and any other fees, what have you, that would be a tenant to homeownership. And that needs to be kept at that level. So with that, I think we also anticipate that one of the features of this program is the repayment. We've talked about that, and I think, under our concept, not only are they repaying virtually all of the initial amount of capital that is advanced, the $4 million, but also we expect that there's an opportunity for capturing what should be the rightful share of SEDA for additional appreciation on the principal itself. So we'll get back to that in a minute, but I think that that's another way of distinguishing programs. Steve?
Yeah. Mike mentioned in terms of reducing costs, some of the things that have been talked about this evening could equally apply for the units here, which could include reducing the size. That unit size was discussed, and I think people thought that we were trying to develop a product that would, people would want to stay in there for a reasonable period of time until they've owned the unit and stay for a little bit longer after that. So that's why the townhome concept was developed by the community and the size. But that size could be looked at for reduction. I think it's been identified the quality of the interior finishes could be reduced. Waivers for city's fees, sprinklers are also included that could be revisited. The garage is being optional or reduced to one car are also considerations, as well as the installation of sewer and water. All of those, I think, would have a substantial impact on reducing that cost, should the council want to have a discussion to discuss those individual areas to bring those unit costs to a more affordable level. So, Mike, do you want to lead us through the final summary?
So, again, you're going to be, under this program, the city will realize repayment over 90% of that $4 million within the 48 years, and the balance of it would occur upon resale. I think one of the really important distinguishing features is that utilizing this program, it allows you to replicate it again and again and again. So it's not just one and done. And so when we talk about 10 units, and by the way, the 10 units can be expanded to significantly more units if we reduce the cost or we utilize less upfront capital by using debt financing upfront. But the main point is that because of the fact that you do do this again and again, you're, over time, going to be doing many, many, many more units than the 10 that you start with. We think that this allows you to meet a need that you've previously articulated through your own housing plans and through the Dane County plans. I'd like to go to the next slide to talk a little bit about that. Capital returning to the community here. This little spreadsheet is just intended to show our projections of the return of the funds to the city. And this shows a range of between four and eight years. What will really happen is that there'll be a blend here of tenants, so there'll be people all the way from 80% to 100% in terms of that county median income. So the actual numbers would fall somewhere in between here. But if all of the tenants were at 100%, what we project is that at the end of four years, the city would have been repaid $3,519,000 of the original 4.1% that was advanced. And then the deferred amount would be repaid upon sale of the property by that homeowner. And an additional policy point yet to be decided by the city is the determination of whether to capture some of that additional residual equity. And I think this is a point that speaks a little bit to Jay Allen's point, your point, Jay, about the ability to justify the advance of the dollars here. It's a return on an investment. And if you were to take advantage of that, if everybody was at 100% instead of 4.1%, you'd end up with 4.952 million at the end of the day. And if it was eight years, that number would grow to 5.481 million. So I think you can see that there's a lot of potential for this program to work in the interest of both the homeowner and the city. Steve, you want to finish this off?
Sure. Yeah, last slide. Good news, right? Phase Two, we got kind of sidetracked with looking at those issues that we had. What could a new Phase Two look at? I think last time with the Housing Advisory Committee, the question was, are there available sites? And I think if we were to proceed to Phase Two, we'd certainly want to identify and see if there are available sites. If they're not, that answers the question. It's not possible to do the project, but I think it would be wise to see if there is anything that fits the parameters. And as we've discussed in the pro forma that we've prepared, the biggest concern we had is the land costs and what that cost is going to be in regards to the project. By identifying the land, we identify the cost for the land. We also have a better feel for what that design would ultimately look like. In addition to that, we think that the townhome construction parameters could be revisited. I just talked about things that could be done. We wanted to put together a concept or a product that the council is comfortable with, and that certainly would be something that could be discussed. We would be able to update the model, determine whether there's financing in that mix to be able to be more efficient in the use of tax increment revenues. And we could also further clarify staff and potential property manager roles in this project as we were to move forward, including further documentation that would be required by Corals &amp; Brady. So that's what we would see as Phase Two. We've designed this so that the council can stop this at any time they want. If you think you're comfortable now in stopping it, that's certainly your option. By moving to this next level, it would be more time gathering additional information and reporting back to you what those would look like and whether or not it's feasible to move ahead with the model that we've talked about in this particular concept. So we appreciate your support and understanding and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate your patience waiting for this. Questions, comments from the council. Bill?
Yeah, I'm interested to know more about the handoff from renter to owner. I mean, the last half dozen years, housing prices are, you know, the equalized value of the average house has increased by seven or eight percent annually. I'm wondering, at such time as somebody has accumulated 20% down, the fair market value of that unit is going to be substantially higher, and will their income actually qualify them for a mortgage at that price point?
Well, we've attempted to take all of that into account. What we've done in terms of the income question, we've taken a look at how that income has grown in the past, within that range and that income bracket for the 80% to 100% segment. And we've utilized a number that's a little under that figure for the growth in income. And based upon, you know, our projections and all of the details as to the assumptions that were utilized or found in the original report and the updates to the report that have been provided, but we think that this is still feasible, yes, based upon the use of those assumptions. Now, can that change? Of course, and it has, but we've attempted to take into account a range of scenarios from maybe not worst-case, but a worst-case and a best-case type scenario range. So we provided those in our report.
And what really triggers it is the 20% of cash for the mortgage, that they accumulate that. And then the mortgage is sized based on what their income is at that time. So, you know, we're going to get 90% back, but there's a piece that's still being carried there that, you know, that will keep them at 30% of income with the mortgage that they have and the existing, all of the existing expenses that they have associated with mortgage with a homeownership.
Could you explain a little more about that? How does, I mean, I thought this was simply a handoff, and they were going to go get a loan like you normally would. So how is their income, how are they going to make sure, or how do you make sure that the mortgage amount stays within the confines of 30% of their income, if that's dictated just by the selling price and the interest rate on the loan?
We have identified that, if you look at our, the one spreadsheet, the only spreadsheet that we included for tonight was the one that showed the, let's see.
I don't think it's in there, Mike.
Yeah, it's the one that shows the return of equity here.
This one?
Yeah. So there's a deferred reimbursement amount here on the per unit. For example, the first column there shows the amount of $351,988 that's repaid to SEDA at the closing. The difference between that number and the amount that was originally advanced is $28,000, which is not paid at that closing, but is encumbered by a second mortgage. And it's going to get paid eventually back to the CDA once either they refinance or sell the property. And the reason that we have that there is because, at that point, in order to get the 20% equity position in the thing, we had to give that amount of money back and include that as part of their down payment for the 20% at that point in time for closing. So you would get that money back when the property eventually sold the second time.
Great. I'm going to keep moving it around. Mayor?
Yes, so thank you. And I want to say thank you for all the work that you have done with this project. I, you know, there is an email that I sent to Mike, and Mike has been sharing with you with all my concerns about this project. I think it's in the pocket. I hope you council have read that, and I sent this email today to you today. So I want to clarify a couple of things. I am not going to read my email, but my concerns are still there. It doesn't matter, this, you know, I want to say thank you for trying to reduce the cost of this, you know, of the house, the townhomes, but the concern are still there. Is a $500,000 townhome or $100,000, you know? The concern that I have, how to manage this project, what is the role of the city, the risk, all of that are there. My question is, one thing I want to clarify, you know, what I have in mind for this use of this housing fund is to how to provide solution and people can be homeowners from day one, okay? And have a huge, an impact that is more than 10 families. So that one is all in my email. But the other thing is, you know, being a homeowner in the state of Wisconsin and paying your taxes, you can have a $300 tax credit in your Wisconsin income tax. So I want to clarify. I agree with you with the standard deduction. It's too high, mortgage, you know, but you have a $300 deduction on your Wisconsin tax return. My other question is the land cost, you know, I mean, how much it's going to cost? Suppose that we find a parcel here in Fish Hatchery that it had to allocate 10 townhomes. I don't know. I assume that, because we need to put this townhome in a transit corridor, you know? It could cost at least $2 million a parcel there, or a little bit more. So you have 10 houses, you already have $200,000 in land for, you know what I mean? So my concern is also the land price could be very, very, if we want to build this townhome in an area where it's dense with transit, you know, the cost of the land is going to be prohibited to do this, you know what I mean? So that one is something that I have multiple concerns. I don't think that we have at the city level, we have the capacity to manage a project like that, the resources. It's too complicated. My main goals of using this housing fund is how to provide homeownership to people from day one. So most of my concerns are in my email. I, you know, I am seeing this like as a business proposal, and that's it. And I am looking at this with, you know, how this is, if the city is ready to take this, you know, with the resources that we have, the capacity that we have right now, that one is one of all the main concerns. now, that one is one of all the main concerns that I have. But I want to ask as city administrator, what do you think about this project? Because at the end of the day, if we do this, you're going to be, had to manage this project.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that question. If you don't mind, Mayor, could I wait until all the alders have had a chance to weigh in?
Who else would like to speak? Jay?
Yeah, I, so over the last couple of weeks, I've had a lot of time. Well, I haven't had a lot of time, but I have taken a lot of time to watch the Housing Advisory Commission meeting a couple of times, at 1.5 speed, by the way, because that is a long freaking meeting, man. And I've read all the stuff that has, that's been out there, and there are some things about this program that intrigue me. But there's a wheelbarrow full of things that make it very, very difficult for me to support this program. Now, I want to start with, I think the main issues I have go back several years because I would not have, I would not have posited that we're going to build houses that look just like any other market rate house and have that be the basis of this program. I think that was a faulty assumption. And when we're looking now at a $417,000 house as the model, that's not any different than what anyone else is building in Pittsburgh right now. Now, since, and I want to bring this up again, the missing middle refers to a housing product, not individuals. So the missing middle means that we aren't building housing in a way that is affordable to people of more moderate incomes. I'm not sure that I would have targeted people in the range of 80 to 100% of Dane County median income because, Mike, you didn't bring that, one of the spreadsheets you had in the Housing Advisory Committee meeting, but there was, there was a, you had, one of the spreadsheets, and you talked about this to, to some degree, was that with the $110,000 income that you were using for the model, 30%, of that would be $33,000 a year that they would pay in rent. So, you know, I'm not an accountant, but I can do simple math. And I, and I looked at that, and I said, well, I live in an apartment that's about $2,000 a month, so that's $24,000 a year. And if I had the $33,000 to pay in rent, that would give me about $9,000 beyond what I'm paying right now. If I took that $9,000 for a couple of years and saved it, I could go and get an FHA loan or a WEDA loan through a first time home buyer program to buy a house. So the people in that income range don't need this program. I think what we've been struggling with here at the council is we can't seem to build houses anywhere in Pittsburgh for less than $400,000, and that's a high price for a lot of people. I mean, to me, I would target the program at people making $60,000 to $80,000, because those are the people who need some help. You know, if you're making less than $60,000, there's probably not anything we can do to help you buy a house. But if you're in the $60,000 to $80,000 range, maybe a program like this could help, maybe not. But at the price point of these houses, you know, with the $417,000 house, that's just, that's what we keep approving, and that's what we keep, you know, every developer who walks through here, we complain about it, because they'll come in and say, well, we're going to build affordable housing, and then they come in and say, well, they're going to be between $400,000 and $450,000. And we're like, well, that's not affordable housing. So, so to me, that right there is a real, it's a, I think the way the whole thing has been structured from the beginning has been flawed. And I'm not saying this model isn't a workable model, it might be. I'm just saying it's not something I'm willing to support for the amount of money that is being required for this. It's just, and I realize we get the money back over time, and that's fine. I, I mean, I presume with Gary's proposal, the city will get the money back over time too, but that's, that's a much lower cost product, although I still have, I still have concerns about how do we make lower cost housing permanently lower cost? I don't want to be sitting here, I don't want to be sitting here year after year after year saying, well, you know, we built this lower cost housing, but now it's up to market rate because we subsidized it, and now the subsidy is no longer needed. So, I mean, the types of things I want to see happen with, with housing are radically different than what this program addresses. So that's, those are my thoughts on that at this point.
Who else would like to share?
I can just give some thoughts as well. I've sat through your presentations multiple times now, and the housing advisory was outstanding. And I think this is, this is a wonderful idea. It really is, and it's well thought through, and clearly all of the pitfalls have been addressed. So like, I, I like a lot about this project, a lot about this idea, but I still, I still have concerns about getting into the business, getting into all of these aspects of building homes, managing homes, managing rental properties, all of that stuff that we would, I know we would give it to advisors and we'd hire out contractors, but it's like, we're getting into a lot of businesses that we don't have expertise in, and that, the risk of that is what worries me. And the benefit of being able to get that money back, because I've heard that is one of the main benefits of this, is that we can recoup the money and use it again, that doesn't feel like big enough of a benefit to take on the risk for me. And I, I don't know, I just see so many ways that this could go south, and while I believe that we could weather those storms and figure it out, there are also other ways that we can go with this money that would do good for lots of families and, yeah. I, so, those are my thoughts. I have concerns. Nicole?
Yeah, I won't belabor the point. I just want to echo what Gabriella said. I think also, yeah, this is bigger risk, but bigger reward, as opposed to an immediate funding of selling when an owner is found. And I also just have concerns in general with like, listening to, you know, NPR and forecasts of what financial perspectives are being discussed due to the recent election. I just worry about signing up for something that's riskier, to be quite honest. I think, I don't know what's going to happen with inflation and with tariffs and all those things. So I just think at this point, a less risky option for more families is a little bit better. But I really appreciate the time and energy being put into this presentation and this plan, because I think it's a really audacious thing that I hope a lot more municipalities are at least asking themselves if they can do. Jim?
I guess my question is, you know, the target areas of this, you know, proposal, Belmar, Dunham, Marsh, Jamestown, North Fish Hatchery, Rowan, and Southdale, you know, I look at it as giving a shot in the arm to those communities. And, you know, as we move on, what do we do? I mean, these are priority communities. And are we just saying we're not going to deal with these communities anymore in our healthy neighborhood initiatives? I mean, is that the other part of this, that we don't go with this?
Well, we need to find the land, and the land on those area could be very, very expensive too, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's, it's not like we are saying no, it's like, I, you know, I am, I share with you all my concerns. This is a great idea. I supported it in 2021, but a lot of things have changed since then. And I think, you know, building this townhome, the price is $416,000 for an area 100% medium, you know, there are a lot of, the people at that level, they can qualify for all the programs.
Let's, let's let Jim continue.
No, but this is what I asked you, this is what I said, yes, we want to continue investing in the healthy neighborhood, but you know, the thing is, looking for a land, a piece of land that is going to be, I assume in the, whatever parcel that we find in those area, they're going to cost at least $2, $3 million to be, to put these townhomes.
You just, I mean, just thought on top of my head when this all started, you know, when you say healthy neighborhoods and everything else like that, Housing Advisory Committee, I mean, did we then just put something out there that we're not going to follow through on?
No, we are, we are following through with other, other initiatives. The other thing we can do also, we can use the money for down payment assistance, you know? We can use the money, the housing fund for, you know, say we are going to use $4 million to do down payment assistance for people that they want to live in those areas, buy a house there. For the other option.
And I guess, Mike, City of Madison actually has a good program. I mean, they actually, do they manage CDA housing, or how does that work?
They also do units, but then they contract out the management of those units, just like we would do with this program here during the period that CETA was owning them until people transitioned to ownership and conventional mortgages.
And do you know if they have any pitfalls with their, with their programs or anything? You know, where, is cost in the city more than they expected?
Yeah, I guess I don't have any, you know, information on, on that in particular. We could, you know, ask some questions and get some information for you if you wanted, you know, as a follow-up.
Joe?
Going off of Jim's point, I'm asking you, your professional capacity at Habitat, is there any plans of Habitat to expand into, I know Habitat has, has a lot of homes in Belmar, for example, but are there plans to do any additional builds in any of the H&amp;I neighborhoods?
Speaking from Habitat's perspective, there is strong interest in moving into Pittsburgh, yes. That's part of conversation. I, the other thing that I want to talk, and this is, it's a shame that you guys didn't have a chance to get your presentation in before, and I apologize for that, that's my fault with the agenda. But the other thing, I am, I want to say that I'm not totally opposed to this. I feel like I almost, I feel like we should probably make a decision, but like, I am not totally against this, but what I, what I am struggling with is I think there are other things that we can do with this money, and there is actually a cost opportunity. If we, you do this, we cannot do other things. And so that's what I'm trying to grapple with, is what is, what opportunities are lost if we invest for plus $1 million in this? And that's the thing I don't feel like I have a full comprehensive understanding of. And so, for example, like, I feel like there's so many opportunities to put out RFPs for certain types of, of housing projects and, and using TID financing to actually invest in those projects to make sure that they're affordable. And I'm going to say that I just don't know enough about what's out there. I can pontificate, and I've heard things, and I'm parroting things that I've heard from others, but I just like, really want to explore, what are the other options that we could do here? And potentially options that we could help with a lot more people and targeting in some of those healthy neighborhoods, for sure. But that's the piece of it that I don't have a full understanding of, is like, what is the, what is the opportunity cost of doing this? And a lot of energy has been put into this, and it's a good project, and it's, I, there's a lot of passion behind it, so I hate to say that I have doubts, because I, I want to like, I want to love it as much as you all do, I do, but, but that, that opportunity cost is my concern. Mike, did you want to say something?
And to your point, part of our remarks that we would have made, we're going to address some of those kind of questions or uncertainties that you were asking about for other programs. But just a few things, themes I'll hit on to that point there is, as CETA staff, we've been looking at, how do we develop programs that are strategic, that address the housing needs that were identified in our 2019 housing plan? There's not going to be a one size fits all program that solves all of our housing needs. We're going to need multiple programs, and those programs are all going to require CETA staff involvement. There's not this magic program out there that we just contracted out, even with the Efficiency Navigator that's been launched. We've spent significant amount of staff time working with that, and that will continue as far as coordination, collaboration, and reporting as the programs are actually implemented. We've been looking at, how do we design sustainable programs so that way they live on? And I'm using the word program deliberately here, because we're not talking about just a project, a development project. We're talking about developing programs, just like we've done with community and economic development over the last 25 years. And we're looking, how do we leverage our relationships with partners like Mike and Steve, private sector developers like Gary and Ted? And how do we leverage their expertise to implement our programs to result in projects, but that also leverages our financial resources and where we expand the pie? So right now, our, our housing fund is at 9.5 million, but let's not set our sights and restrict us to that. Just as you heard from, from Gary, where there would be a repayment of the down payment assistance, that would then expand that pie, just like we did with the $1 million that Mayor Julia put in for the land bank. We've already are leveraging that for CDBG Pro application to hopefully get, if the grant is approved, another $600,000 that could be used for infrastructure. So Joe, to your point about somebody like Habitat, Lorraine and our team, we're already having conversations with Habitat. We're already having conversations with the Madison Area Community Land Trust, you know, about, that would address Jay's question on how do you maintain and perpetuate some degree of affordability? So there are a lot of program considerations that are, that are out there. We as staff, we're very open to looking at Gary's proposal as a standalone through TID number 11 on the Cleanfield site. We need to identify new developer. We've got a perfect one here in our backyard, Pittsburgh, homegrown. But we also like the rent to own program, because there's people that are falling between the cracks, and not everybody is eligible for a conventional mortgage. And the idea of helping somebody to build up and build back their credit history there to be in a position for homeownership, we think is important. We like the idea that this program could be replicated over and over again. And we have money in the 2025 budget to proceed with phase two. And to your point, Mayor, about the land cost, give us the opportunity in phase two to go and look at a specific parcel of land, and let us come back with that information. Another part of phase two is to look at the contracts that would be with the developer, with the management company, and also what the lease would look like, to address questions and concerns that people may have out there. And one thing I will say is, as far as the product here, that was determined, not by Mike and Steve, that was determined through Housing Advisory Committee, CETA, Plan Commission, and Council. That kind of directed what product we wanted to have, and we were directed to look at a market rate product there. So just for the foundation of the program there, that was the direction that we were, you know, given by committees and by policymakers at that, that time. And we started out at 320, which is kind of where we'd like to be today, you know, if at all possible. But there's nothing unique to this program or model that is any different than the appreciation of housing costs and assessments here in Pittsburgh since 2020 and 2021. When you look at those percentage increases, and I think somebody up there pointed it out before, where we get to the 415 right now tracks exactly what's happened in Pittsburgh since that time. So it's nothing unique to this model, or our product, or the program here, it's just the effect of what changed in the housing market so quickly with construction costs, interest rates, and other variables that are out there. So I guess I'm asking, on behalf of CETA staff, that we still be given the opportunity to work with Mike and Steve to vet phase two. The money's in the budget to do that, and let us at least, there's a, still a no, a go, no-go decision point that would come if we identify a specific piece of property and a builder and developer and management company, and we can bring that package to you. And we can also identify maybe who would be a project manager that would do this, just like our police facility there, that maybe we could tap into some expertise that would manage that from a staff capacity standpoint and everything there. And give us that opportunity to bring back a more fully fledged proposal. And give us that opportunity to bring back a more fully fledged proposal and actual, as part of this program, how we could implement a project based on this, this program model. I think we've come this far. I think, you know, spending some additional dollars to go through Phase Two and see if we can address concerns and adjust maybe some cost variables and things. I think we would like to be able to pursue that as CETA staff and working with Mike and Steve. I would also ask, and what we're asking on the Gorman proposal there, is to also say, yes, CETA staff, go forward with that one, too. And then what we would like to do, because again, we're looking at it from a program and process standpoint, as we evaluate programs, is we would work with Gorman and Company to come through our process, which is coming to the Housing Advisory Committee and CETA, and then ultimately back forward to you folks on what is the program that we put together. Because just like with this program, there's some policy considerations as far as that equity split and what happens in those life change circumstances. With the Gorman proposal, there are some policy considerations that, again, you all decide, we don't get to decide as staff. And those are things about upfront TIF dollars for infrastructure, for housing, which we haven't done before. Make sure I got my notes here. And the down payment assistance there, and, and the fee waiver. And we're not using the word waiver here, we're using, underwriting the fee costs, the city fee costs, which are about $10,000 per unit. But that would be part of that bundle and package. So in addition to the down payment assistance for that program, there would be upfront TIF assistance for the infrastructure, and then also that, covering the fees that we have that are 9,000, 10,000, you know, per unit, kind of there as far as the, but those, again, are policy considerations that we would have to, as we vet the program with Gorman, you know, and through the committees, bring back to you. But like I said in the beginning, we've got two great programs here. We've got the capacity with our TID for housing dollars and with existing TID districts to do both. We're unique as a community. I think, let's be innovative, and let's try some things and see what works. There's risk. I completely understand and acknowledge that, and we don't minimize that. But I think some of these, any additional concerns will be addressed in some of the next step, and let's see where the land price comes in, and if we can find something that works within the model and bring that back to you.
So I'm gonna let Dave jump in in just a second, but I did just want to respond since, I appreciate those comments. And I guess I will just say, for me personally, I am open to continuing to the next phase with the strong, with the understanding that, that it's not a for sure, because I, every time we move forward, I feel like it becomes like, oh, this is going to happen, you know? And that's the worry. It's like, if we push it to the next phase, and then we just kill it the next time. You know what I mean? Like, that's what I'm worried about, is just creating a perception of, of that it's happening. So I guess if there's an understanding that, that it might not continue on past that phase, a full understanding of that, but that might not affect with the rest of the council. Thanks. Dave, go ahead.
Thank you, Gabriella. You must have been working outside like I was all day today, to leave your head on. My question, you know, we were talking about the Jamestown and Belmar, you know, there really aren't, there aren't more than one or two, you know, like, sites, and some of the, you know, they'd be too expensive. Would an option be to, you know, like, we have a number of fourplexes, or if you get on right off of Verona Road, there's a number of, and the two-built, two, two-unit, single-family rentals, you know, would it be an option to, to buy those and then renovate them some, and then have those be rent to own? I, I'm just wondering if that would be an option. You know, if you talk to the mayor, she'll tell you, in Argentina, where she grew up, people own the apartments, you know, they, that they, they live in, and, you know, a quad, quad unit, or, you know, these two-unit ones that I'm thinking of on, you know, on Verona Road, would that be an option we'd want to consider, you know, for this, to, to get maybe a little more, something a little lower cost? So I'll, I'll leave it at that and wait to hear what you say. I'm sure I'm all wet.
I don't know, I think I'll maybe ask Mike and Steve that question. They said, you know, there's different program models we could look at, or product type, or, you know, flexibility with it. We haven't talked about that, you know, as an option. So I don't know if you guys have anything to kind of share on that?
Well, when we started this, you know, we, we talked about a number of those kinds of ideas themselves. And so, yes, we started down that path, and then we ended up going this other direction. But there's nothing that would be wrong in my mind. Whether, would it work, I don't know. We'd have to run the numbers and check it out. I think it's worth trying.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think it would be worth trying if, if, if the community felt it was of, of interest to, to see about that.
Can you hear Dave? I don't, I'm not sure. Okay, good. In the interest of time, very overtime. So I would love administrator to jump in and give some thoughts, and then maybe we can go around the council to see if people, I mean, either you don't have an opinion now, but do you have, do you have preference or moving onto the next phase or not moving on forward at all? Chad?
Thank you, Gabriella. Before I offer my, my thoughts on the, the program, I certainly want to recognize Mike and Steve from H and A and their ability to even come up with this concept. It is quite innovative and intriguing, and I certainly do not have the skillset to have come up with this, so I applaud you for being able to do that. I also want to recognize the amount of patience that you've had through this process. I know that you've been with, with the city through this for several years now, so I appreciate the time that you've been willing to commit to this. Mike, Joyce, and Lorraine, I know you guys have put a lot of time and effort into this as well. I know what your feelings are about this particular program, and I know that you guys are very passionate about making a difference in the community. With that being said, I share a number of concerns that have already been expressed here, but I'll just focus on one concern that I've had from the get-go with this particular project. I came into this role about three and a half years ago, and I think was, this program had been presented already at that point in time. And the main concern that I've had is the city staff is not structured or has capacity. And this is not a slight on city staff, but I'm not sure we have the expertise for this particular program at this time. That doesn't mean we won't in the future, but I'm not sure we do at this particular time. And I also, if I understand the program parameters correctly, CETA ultimately is responsible for management of this, this project by statute. There has to be some measure of potentially insulating the city from excessive liability as this rental time period carries on. And I'm not sure the common council is going to be willing to provide CETA with the necessary statutory authority to become property owners and landowners, and ultimately staff CETA to do that. So I think there's a whole host of challenges that come with being a landlord, and I'm not sure that the city is prepared for that at this point in time. And I know that we've talked about wanting to hire a property management company to do the day-to-day oversight, and in an ideal world, that would work out okay. But at the end of the day, that is money that's being invested in this program to a property management company that could potentially be invested elsewhere. And what happens if the property management company doesn't perform to expectations? Or if the property management company comes to us and says, our rates are going up by 10% next year? Or if they say, we'd like to withdraw from this contract, this isn't what we signed up for, or they go bankrupt, or whatever the case may be? So I think there are a whole host of concerns just solely focusing on being property owners and landowners, or landlords for the city, that, to be honest with you, me personally speaking, I'm not sure that can be ultimately vetted away to give me a level of comfort.
Who would like to share? Let's try to wrap this up. Mayor?
So Phase Two, you know, what is the timeframe from Phase Two and cost? Yeah, you know, what do you ambition Phase Two to be? You know, six months, a year?
Probably depends, first of all, how quickly we can identify some parcels, although we've already got some in mind that are out there, and kind of see what, again, that dollar amount would be. And then it would be working with H and A, you know, to, and quarrels to work on some of those additional legal documents, both for the builder, the management company, and then also the lease, to provide that language to address, again, questions and concerns that are out there and provide more detail, you know, on it. But we do have dollars available in the 2025 budget. That was there, I think it was approximately about $60-some thousand that was identified to cover this cost of work.
In the housing fund?
Yes.
Not the budget?
Right. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Thanks for the clarification. Did you have anything to add on the timetable, like Steve?
No. Six months to a year is what it's going to take, you know?
Jay?
Yeah, I guess if it was up to me, I would just rather not spend six months to a year right now doing the next phase. I think things about this program, I think there's a lot of good information here, and I think we need to revision it and see what it, what the, what the goals are that we're actually trying to accomplish. I just don't think the city subsidizing a bunch more full-priced, market-rate housing is what we need. So I think we need to take several steps back, and, and I, I don't know, I don't know what the council was thinking when they made this determination that that's what they wanted to do, but it wasn't addressing the missing middle, because this doesn't even come close to that. So I think that's what I would like to have us do, is just stop.
Yeah, to add to that, I also don't really have an interest in progressing forward with this, just both from the financial side, the risk side, but also the staff side. I think when a city administrator tells you your staff isn't currently staffed to do something, it's important to listen. So I'm not interested in a Phase Two, but I appreciate the work up until now. Bill?
I also want to point out, and I don't know what the current numbers are, but as of the 2020 update to the comprehensive plan, nearly a quarter of households in Fitchburg were earning less than $35,000. Even if you adjust that for inflation, that's, you know, a household making less than $45,000 today. And I guess I wish we would be using more of our affordable housing dollars to address the people who have the greatest need. You know, putting almost half of our affordable dollars and investing for some, you know, non-trivial period of time for people who are making AMI or nearly AMI doesn't seem like the best use of our funds.
Yeah, I don't want to beat the dead horse, but our city administrator doesn't offer his opinion very often. He usually just kind of states the facts, so I, in that rare occasion that he does, so I'm kind of, that's bringing a little bit more weight to, to the capacity issue. So I would be on the same page as Alder Raffidari on this one.
Anyone else? Jim?
I agree with Bill.
Okay. So anyone else want to speak? It sounds like the consensus is to pause on Phase Two. For my personal opinion, and again, this is my personal opinion, I don't necessarily think that we can shelve this, and I don't think it's out of the question to bring it back to consider, but I, I'm interested to see what other things are out there, and what other things that we can vet and consider. So, but yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo what everyone else has said. All right. I think we can wrap it up. Any final comments? No, okay. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate everybody being out here for so long. It's a long, long time to be here, so thank you, thank you for, for spending the time. Next item on the agenda is announcements. Our next committee of the whole is January 22nd, 2025, and I have an announcement from our administrator.
Yeah, I just want to remind folks of the special council meeting next Tuesday, I'm sorry, two Tuesdays away, December 3rd, December 3rd, 7:00 PM, regards to Chronic Nuisance Abatement Hearing. Just as a point of clarification, this is going to be, is going to be a quasi-judicial proceeding, and city ordinance does require elders to be present for those sorts of proceedings. If you are planning to attend, we do need you in person. Thank you.
Can, can I ask a question about that? Why did December 3rd get to be the magic date?
As far as...
Well, why, why can't we do it at next week's council meeting? Why, why does it have to be December 3rd?
Oh, well, we were looking to try to identify a time in which there was, we could just focus on this particular item, not knowing how long it may take, and recognizing with the conclusion of the year coming up, the next couple council agendas are likely to be pretty, pretty packed. There were 22, I think, referrals for last, last meeting, and I'm...
We got time.
Thinking we're gonna get another 15 or so for the, for the December 10th.
We got nothing but time, Chad.
I hear you. Thanks, Jay.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 10:07 PM. Thank you.